This is now in session, the Honorable William Buprotia give our invocation pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for allowing us to come together. We thank you for the many blessings you've stored upon us. We ask that you keep us with life, health, and strength. We ask you to protect those that serve this community. We ask that you watch over this council as we deliberate the decisions for the people. Lord bless this council, bless those who are in attendance, bless those who wanted to be here who could not join us. And Lord, please remember our troops and keep them out of harm's way. Amen.
Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody that came to our council meeting tonight and the people watching on the computer and videos later. We have nobody that's supposed to be sworn in, is that correct, Michael?
Yes, correct.
So we have no oath of office, and I don't believe no appearances. Okay, so we got public forum. We had several people sign up. So when I call your name, if you'd come forward and give your name and address, and remember you have two minutes, in fairness to everybody behind you, I have to just give you the two minutes.
Do you want to remind them about they didn't have to sign up for public hearing?
Oh, did, yeah, let me check that, too. So here again, if you did sign up for the public hearing concerning the cell tower, I'll wait until we get to that public hearing. That way you're not restricted on how long you can speak. If you come up and speak during this time, you get two minutes and that's it, you're done. So I'm sure, well, I'll call your name out and just make sure you're good with that, but you would be better off waiting until we have the public hearing. First person that signed up is Billy Hagner. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I'm Billy Hagner. I live at 1901 Voyager Road, York. Reason I'm here tonight was to make a few comments about the pole branch Pennies project that's up for approval tonight. It's like y'all don't get the opportunity to approve the contract. As you know, I was on the Pennies Citizen Committee several years ago, and so I have a little bit of in-depthness into what all been going on. But anyway, the project, as y'all know, originally started in 2003 on Pennies Two, and it was then rolled over into Pennies Three in 2011, and the price of it was increased to, I think around $25 million. So I'm very glad to see that it is now up, I think I saw like $29 million was the final bid on it. So it's very glad to see that. And just going forward, I hope that all the policies and the procedures that have been changed over the past year or so, and plus y'all's intense oversight of the whole Pennies project, projects, will be sure that we do not have any of the Pennies Four projects that fall into this category where there's large, long delay and this large overrun or over budget, original budget that we have on this project. But we're very, very glad to see this project getting ready to look like start construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Next person that signed up would be one of the people that signed up concerning the cell tower, John Reeves.
I'll wait.
Best thing to do. Floyd Myers, same thing?
Same.
Okay. Next person's Don Clark. Speak about Vietnam Veterans Day. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Council. My name is Don Clark. I live at 3878 Concord Road in York. Last year, Congress passed a law making March 29 Vietnam Veterans Day in perpetuity. This year, there will be replaying at the Vietnam Moore Memorial in Washington, DC on March 29 by the highest ranking official available, depending on what's going on in America that day. On March 29, 2018, in Columbia, South Carolina, Governor McMaster will read a proclamation as well, designating March 29 as Vietnam Veterans Day in South Carolina to align it with the national recognition. I am pleased that this council will consider tonight a similar resolution on behalf of York County, and I'd like to thank you for that. Thirty-six men made the supreme sacrifice from York County. In the balance of my time, I would like to read these names aloud. To the degree that I don't finish the list, Ronnie Taylor has signed up behind me to finish the list. The names are Jesse Adams of Rock Hill, United States Army, Vincent Banks of Rock Hill, United States Marine Corps, Roy Barnett, Sharon, United States Marine Corps, Roger Bell, Clover, United States Army, Sam Boyd, Fort Mill, United States Army, James S. Camp, Clover, United States Marine Corps, James S. Carpenter of Rock Hill, United States Marine Corps, Howard Chisholm from York County, United States Army, George L. Cobb of Clover, United States Army, Johnny P. Costner of York, United States Army, Robert B. Eldridge, Rock Hill, United States Army, Charles R. Farrell, Fort Mill, United States Army, Robert S. Good of York, United States Army. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Don, go ahead and finish. Since y'all thought ahead and Ronnie signed up, I'm sure he doesn't mind to let you finish it.
All right. Charles M. Goud of Fort Mill, United States Army, Richard Hannan of Rock Hill, United States Army, Abraham Harris of York, United States Army, Carl E. Harris of Rock Hill, Jerry D. Helms, Fort Mill, both US Army, Larry K. Henson, Rock Hill, United States Marine Corps, James M. Johnstone, Fort Mill, United States Army, Raymond E. Long, Fort Mill, United States Marine Corps, Charles McDowell, Rock Hill, United States Army, Jesse Miller, United States Army from York County, Charles L. Morgan of Rock Hill, United States Marine Corps, Freddie Pfeiffer of Morek Hill, United States Marine Corps, Johnny W. Potts of Fort Mill, United States Army, Claude A. Reinhardt, United States Army, Lawrence E. Scott, Fort Mill, United States Army, Gerald R. Simmers of Rock Hill, United States Marine Corps, Albert W. Smar Jr., United States Army from York County, David W. Smith of Fort Mill, United States Army, Andrew Springs of Rock Hill, United States Marine Corps, Lynell Stigall Jr., Fort Mill, United States Marine Corps, David Tucker, Rock Hill, United States Army, and Lilberg Weldon Jr. of Rock Hill, also United States Army. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will leave a copy of the names with Karen for the record.
I appreciate that, Don. Appreciate everything y'all do.
Okay, and for the record, Ronnie Taylor attended the funeral of Charles Morgan at that time.
Thanks, Don. Okay, our next item is consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I asked that if we could move item number 11 out of the consent agenda, the Senate bill for discussion. You can put it at the end of the new business.
Okay. And what was Senate Bill number again?
Number, the bill, oh, it's item number 11.
Yeah.
Senate Bill S. 0431.
Okay, so do we have a motion minus adding the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cox.
The good property is for second reading, and I've had some folks approach me about the property that was originally purchased to put a library there, and I think it's important for us to at least get a letter because as I understand it, the library board said that they're not moving forward and do not have any funds to put a library there. So I want to make sure that that's part of this record when we make this decision. We could ask them to provide a letter to that effect.
Okay. No further discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item is public hearing, and bear with me while I turn over to it. First public hearing and consider second reading is case number 1731, rezoned from RD2 to RUD at Heckle Boulevard. Anybody here want to speak against?
Yes.
Okay, I knew there were some of you back there. Okay, so whoever wants to come first, and then just give your name and address. Yes, sir.
My name is John B. Reeves. I'm a resident of Huntington Subdivision here in Rock Hill, and we are, we are in opposition to the cell phone tower and the rezoning for the application of such. I represent my board and all of the residents there.
Are you president of HOA?
I am the president of the HOA, and I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the cell phone tower, the zoning and everything that comes with it. I do have my secretary here, his name's Darrell Watts, and he has submitted a written email to all the council members here that have all the PDFs and everything on the individual signatures in opposition to it. And Mr. Watts is here to also speak and further delineate some of the salient points of our opposition, and I would like to introduce him at this time.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Watts?
And if you would, just repeat your name and address.
Darrell Watts, 1601 Huntmore Drive, Rock Hill. I'm just going to reiterate the email that I sent you. Cell, cell, everybody needs cell coverage except if it's put up against your house. You know, 155-foot metal tower, whether it's tries to look like a fake tree or is a metal pole sticking up in here, is not about, you know, it is not good for your property value. It's ugly, and I will see it right outside my front door. So that was, that was my item one in the email to you. Two, we have a retired engineer in our community that happens to be my next-door neighbor and the father of the family that lives closest to this cell tower location that says they have conditioning units that will, that have motors that run, cycle on and off and will introduce additional noise to the residents close by. We're perplexed as to why this piece of property up against our neighborhood. You know, we're in a rural neighborhood. We have a beautiful community. There's, if you drive up and down Heckle Boulevard between Main Street and Hurlon Avenue, there is a lot of property for sale. If I, if I read the ownership correctly, there's 20-some acres that belong to this particular property owner. You know, why that one acre right beside our community is our concern. We, 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 like, of course, everybody wants cell coverage. We do, too, but why does it have to be right up against our, our community?
I don't, I'm breaking my rules for council members. Just to clarify a point you just made, are you saying that if it wasn't that one acre right up against your neighborhood, y'all would be okay with it? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
Yes.
So if it was in that, just not that particular acre, but somewhere else on the 20 acres, y'all would be good with it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, of course, it's, you know, it's simply the visual, the visual ugliness of a cell tower right looking outside your front door that is the concern. I would just simply ask that you put yourself in our shoes. Would you want a cell tower installed in front of your house that you could see it out, out the front, front door and anywhere you stood out in your yard, it was a cell towers over you? The, we believe also that those photo simulations that were presented and Mr. Pennington's proposal were conveniently during the summer when it was, trees had their full foliage, when the trees during, in between Mar, October and March, when there is no foliage, that it becomes very present, visually present, so it would be even more of a visual impact. They have to clear some trees to simply install the thing. There, that's just further loss of that noise and visual barrier that would be in between us and the, and the cell tower. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anybody else opposed? Whoever gets to the podium first. Are y'all married?
We are.
Okay.
My name is Matthew Ray. I live at 1586 Huntmore Drive. I'm at the property adjacent to the proposed cell phone tower site, and I just wanted to come here and express my opposition to the rezoning. And again, I wanted to reiterate some of what the previous speaker said, that we're really opposed to just the ugliness of this cell phone tower being directly beside our house. As a matter of fact, we have photos here that we took from our window, if the council would like to see some of the areas.
You want to pass it to Mr. Kendry, and he can pass it to?
Thank you.
So looking out the side window of our living room, we would be able to see this cell phone tower. And furthermore, this side of the house is where our children sleep, so they will have to, whatever noise or visual impact, it will be affecting them. And I guess one of the other items that I wanted to bring up here was that we looked at the survey and noticed that approximately half the site is in a flood zone, and I wanted to express my concern that this may impede the flow and recession of a flood in such an event, and I'm concerned that this may impact flood damage to my home. That's all that I have.
I just want to say, I'm a stay-at-home mother of two kids.
Give your name for?
My name is Emily Ray. I live at 1586 Huntmore Drive in Rock Hill. I'm a stay-at-home mother of two kids. Their ages will be four tomorrow and seven. We're in the immersion program at Rock Hill, which is one of the reasons that we stayed in Rock Hill. And I have been in love with the house we live in since I first saw it, but we only bought it a year and change ago. We bought it January 13 of 2017. And to find out that our dream home and our, our dream yard and the places that my kids are supposed to play in is, is going to turn into a cell phone tower is heartbreaking. And I can see the cell phone tower site sitting on my couch looking out of my window. If I look at my kids riding their bikes in our driveway, I can't not see it. It is so close. My children's windows face where the, the air conditioning units to cool the cell phone tower will be. Those get very noisy. We all know it gets hot. And I just can't imagine staying in a house like that, next to a tower like that. It would make me want to leave the area more than likely because I, it's not what I want. And on top of that, I'm concerned about the impact it will have on my home value. I know that they have conducted studies, but I do have several friends in real estate that have informed me that while it's not necessarily something you can find in a study done, most people do not want to live by a cell phone tower. In fact, we looked at several houses when we first moved to Rock Hill and counted them out because of their proximity to cell phone towers. So I just wanted to put my opposition out there for those reasons. And you can see in those pictures, one of those pictures is me sitting on my couch in the tree with ivy on it. Right behind that will be the tower. There will be no avoiding it, so.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate you coming.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody, yes, sir.
My name is James Ray. I live at 1611 Huntmore. That's three houses up from my son Matt, and we've been there about 20 years. And I just want to reiterate that, to hope you guys can put us, put yourself in our place, too, and empathize with where we're at with this cell site. It's, you know, we have a great neighborhood and we want to, we just were surprised that we, we're going to end up with a cell site directly at the end of our cul-de-sac, which is in plain view from my house, and it's in Matt's backyard or side yard. So we just, you know, it's literally in his back door, and with the air handlers, especially if they have to elevate the site out of the floodplain, it's going to project that noise even more because you're going to have multiple tenants on this side, multiple air handlers. And then again, if it's elevated, then you're going to have a lot more noise, and it's going to be right in his back door, right at his front porch there where they, where they live. You know, new families with children and retired citizens in this Huntington subdivision where I live is, they settle families and their lives are here in this, in this subdivision. And I'm one of the retirees there, so I can speak to the, some of the other folks that are retired as well. We don't want to see our properties, like Emily says, and our neighbors' properties, devalued. This extends deeper than houses or real estate. This is our neighborhood, and these are our homes. I don't pretend to know about zoning, but the changes of the zoning to rural is not understandable by us. Huntington Subdivision is in the city limits of Rock Hill, and, you know, this is not a rural area. These are, we have banks, drugstores, gas stations, restaurants, and even a strip mall with a grocery store and other, other various businesses just moments, not minutes, from this property. So it's not rural. Lastly, we implore this county council to vote no on this rezoning. As retirees, families, and children of our neighborhood and taxpayers of York County, we would appreciate being given first consideration in this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else opposed? Anybody for?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council.
Be sure to give your name and address.
My name is Gary Pennington. I'm attorney of the Pennington Law Firm, 530 Lady Street, Unit 403, Columbia, South Carolina. I'm here on, tonight on behalf of my client, Echo Site, if I could introduce the property owners, Mr. Baldwin and his wife Teresa. Here on behalf of T-Mobile tonight is Jeff, and I never get his last name right.
Lava.
Lava. And on her way is Ms. Mary LaBarry. Mary, are you here yet? Mary works for Tower Source, and she was involved in the site acquisition for this site. She went back to the old location for the planning commission, so she'll be here in a minute. But we did file on behalf of Mary a site acquisition statement, which is a part of your packet, which talked about the process she went through to identify this particular location. I've got a PowerPoint presentation I'll go through quickly, then answer any questions that you may have. Does this have a pointer on it? I'm colorblind. Okay, so the first thing I want to talk about is need. Why are we here? Why are we trying to rezone this property? Well, obviously, there is a need to provide additional capacity on the T-Mobile network in Rock, in Rock Hill in York County. And we build towers for two reasons. One is for coverage. That is, there's no coverage there. You're getting no bars on your phone. But the other reason, and one of the more prominent reasons today we build new towers or new facilities, is to add capacity. Each cell site operates with a given level of spectrum that that carrier has been licensed by the FCC. And even with the advent of technology, 4G LTE, these sites have limitations, limitations on the number of consumers that can be served at any given time. That's especially true now that we're in the broadband age. After the Apple iPhone was invented in 2007, broadband became necessary on these smartphones. I don't know what the percentage of Americans are that use smartphones, but it's pretty high, probably about 70%. So it's like a hockey stick graph, if you will. There's been an exponential demand for broadband service for T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, and everyone. Well, the only way you can increase the level of capacity is to offload existing sites. Oops. So this site, bear with me. This site here is an existing T-Mobile site. All these are existing T-Mobile sites that you see these triangles. And they're triangles because they serve certain sectors in different directions. With this existing site, which I'll say to the east, well, the circle here shows that it's at capacity. So being at capacity, what does that mean? It means that at any given point in time, that system's going to fail, that the next call is not going to go through, that the next internet connection is not going to go through. And that's a problem because it, not only does it impact the people that live in that area, but it impacts all the people who travel through that area. It impacts 911. It impacts the people that live in their homes that rely upon wireless communications. Forty percent of South Carolinians have cut the cord with the telephone companies. All they have is wireless. So the solution is to build this new site here, and it's not an ad hoc process to determine where these new sites go. So T-Mobile issues what they call a search ring, and the engineers determine through modeling the best location to place a new facility to offload the existing facilities. Well, that search ring in these times, it's not miles. It's like a couple of blocks. So Tower Source, Mary LaBarry, and others, they go out, they try to identify existing structures that they can co-locate on, other towers, water tanks, tall buildings. Well, none of that existed in the search area. They came up at the planning commission, well, why didn't you talk to the fire department? We did talk to the fire department. They said no. We don't want to lease your property for a cell tower. So the end result was this piece of property turned out to be the best candidate for the location of the tower. Now, there's a little bit of a history behind why we're asking for the rezoning. Well, citing communications towers can be difficult in some jurisdictions based upon the way the ordinance was written. And in the beginning, based on my due diligence and conversations with staff, let me say this, your staff has been great to deal with. I was under the impression that communications towers, stealth communication towers, were permitted in the present zoning district that we have now, RD2. However, at the pre-application meeting with the zoning staff, I was told that that interpretation of the ordinance was incorrect, that towers were not permitted in that zoning classification. So at that point in time, they brought in the planning director, and the question was, well, what's the least obtrusive zoning classification we can rezone the property to such that we can build a communications tower here? And the answer was RUD. The, that wasn't, so it wasn't the decision of T-Mobile or Echo Site to choose this particular zoning classification. That's what we were advised to file as. So that's why we filed that way. But this is the only viable candidate in the search area. And I'm very sympathetic with all the comments made here tonight. I know I've been to hundreds of these hearings, and people always want to know, well, there's got to be a better location, got to be a better location. Why here? And I'll address that in a minute. The next thing I want to do is talk about the property. This is just the general area here, the zoning overlay. This is the Huntmore subdivision here, Huntington subdivision. This is Huntmore Drive. These are the lots closest to the actual tower site, which is approximately here. I did hand out to council the distances, Mr. Baldwin measured the distances from the, the actual tower site to the actual houses. I don't have a copy of that with me right now, but I think this is a copy of it right here. Mr. Baldwin estimated that it's approximately 302 feet from the tower to the closest property here, and they spoke. And then approximately 389 feet from the tower to this particular property here. three hundred and eighty-nine feet from the tower to this particular property here. One thing I'd like to point out is that all of the houses face the street. There are no front doors that face in this direction. It is true that the side yard of this home actually does face the tower site up on the top of the hill. So this is only one acre. Mr. Baldwin owns it. This lot is wooded and unimproved. It's true, the majority of it is in a flood zone, and I'll show this in other drawings in a minute. These are just some general pictures. That's the entrance off of Heckel Boulevard. I can assure you that with the photo sims you'll look at later in the taking of the photographs, you know, the wireless industry moves at a very rapid pace. Technology changes. What is good today, six months from now is obsolete. So it's go, 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 go. There was no collusion to take any photographs during a period of time where there would be more foliage on the trees. It just happened to be that time of year. So I want to make sure that we're clear on that. The topography of this site is such that, you know, it's, it's higher here at the right away of Heckel Boulevard, and it drops off sharply down to the bottom of this ravine. So you can see here, there's a stream that runs across the property here. And there's also a thirty-foot sanitary sewer easement there. So the lease area is rather small. You know, typically, we lease maybe a hundred by hundred. In this case, it's a much smaller lease area. And a lot of that's dictated by the fact that, you know, there just isn't enough buildable land there based upon the topography. So from the street to the back of the property lot, we're looking at approximately ten to fifteen feet drop in elevation. You know, the footprint of this tower site's gonna be very small. You know, if you, if you walk outside here and you look down this way, South Congress, you know, you'll see about a five hundred foot guy tower with lights on it. You can see it standing in the middle of the street. The footprint of that tower is probably six acres or more because of the guy wires. And then if you look from the intersection this way, there's about a three hundred foot, what I call lattice tower, this light that you can see from the middle of downtown. The footprint for that site's probably at least a half an acre just because of the size of the tower. In this case, we're talking about a much smaller footprint to minimize the number of trees that are taken out and to minimize the impact on the surrounding properties. So this site is, I think, about sixty, the, the site to be developed is about sixty by sixty. The lease area is a hundred by hundred. In this tower, there will be no lighting. We'll talk about the photo sims in a minute. Typically, these tower sites don't generate noise. The anchor tenant is T-Mobile. They're not using an equipment building with external air conditioners. They use equipment cabinets that sit on a pad, the very small fans underneath. Now, if AT&amp;T or some other carrier co-located, possibly they put air conditioners on the buildings, but it's no more than an HVAC that you're gonna have at your home. It's not gonna generate that level of noise. One of the things that you'll see on the site plan is that even though we'll be taking trees out, we'll be putting Leland cypresses around the fence. And those get pretty thick, and that will help shield some of the noise and the view. And there'll also be protective fencing around the site as well. You know, one of the things we did is put the towers close to Heckel Boulevard as possible. I think the current setback is about fifty-two feet to meet the, to meet the actual setback requirements. Perhaps they could be relaxed to pu, push the site closer to Heckel Boulevard. But Heckel Boulevard's a very busy road. It's a hundred and thirty feet right away. I think I saw the traffic count at seventeen thousand five hundred cars a day during the week. So there are a lot of people coming and going that way. You know, one of the things that I talked to the property owners about, including Ms. Ray on her front porch, was about adding additional Leland cypresses either on the backside of the tower site or around the cul-de-sac where she lives to add more of a screen visually, because they get about fifteen foot tall and they fill in. So unless she's looking up the hill, she's gonna see that close at the property line, she's gonna see the evergreen trees. She's not gonna see over them and then see the tower. And that would help with the noise as well. This is what we proposed to build. This is the monopine. That was what the staff recommended. Obviously, we're open to going with the traditional monopole design. These types of designs are made to blend into the surrounding canopy. I think this tree probably is closer to the height of the existing canopy than some of the other examples that were cited last, at the last meeting, like on four eighty-five. I've got some pictures of some of those too. I'll show you. But in any event, certainly Echo Site and/or T-Mobile would be open to changing the type of the tower. This is the first set of photo sims that you were presented. And the numbers are important because it tells you where the photographs were taken for. So the first three were taken on Huntmore. Then we took two and edged on a, on the main road here. So this is at the end of the cul-de-sac. So at the end of the cul-de-sac, you're at the lowest elevation. So when you're at the tree line looking up, so this is the before picture, and this is the after picture. So you're only gonna see the tip top of the tower. Now, yes, if, if the rays are in their home and the leaves are off the trees, it is, there is some potential that, given the proximity of their porch, that they could look through the woods if they looked over or past the Leland cypresses and actually see the base of the tower. But from the street and the other houses on the street, this is what the view is gonna look like. And I actually met with many of the neighbors out there. And one of the speakers earlier here tonight, I think it was Mr. Watts, he can correct me if I'm wrong. But there was some question about the methodology by which we calculate the vision. So we filed supplemental document with the staff to show the methodology by which we calculate the, the view. And it's just basic trigonometry. And that formula is a part of the application. So when you move up the street, you go to a higher elevation. So with the higher elevation, obviously, this is before, this is the after. You can see more of the tree. And if you move further up the street, at the very top of the street at the intersection, obviously, you're gonna see more of the tower because you're at a higher elevation. And then this is just taken from Heckel Boulevard. You can see, I think this is about a thousand feet north of the site. You know, it's barely visible there. And then south of the site, it's not visible at all. So one of the things that the commission asked, the councilman asked me to do was to have photo sims recreated showing what a typical tower would look like from the same vantage points. And Tower Source provided those to me last Friday. I sent them on the council. So this would be vision one. You can see the very tip top of the, the actual top of the tower. The good news is that, you know, this is built to accommodate three carriers. So, and there's typically about ten feet of separation between antenna rays. So most likely, the next two carriers that come on this tower, you're not gonna see their antennas at all from this viewpoint because they're gonna be beneath the tree line. Once again, as you back away, obviously, you see more of the tower, see it here. And then when you get to the top of the street, you're gonna see more of it as well. Out here on Heckel, from the one viewpoint, you'll see it. From the opposite viewpoint, you won't see it at all. You know, one of the things that I want to talk to you about is, you know, the effort that we put into communicating with the neighborhood. So once I got staff's initial report, which came to me as a surprise because I thought I was acting at their direction, they indicated that the application should be denied. So I immediately reached out to the HOA Board President, who at that point in time was Mr. Bill Ingram. And Mr. Ingram and I, very nice man, we had many discussions on the phone. I sent him a letter, enclosed the entirety of the application, sent him all the documents, discussed everything with him, very cordial. And, you know, I asked him, I said, could you please schedule a meeting with your neighborhood since you're the president of the board? And the response I got back, and this was probably November of last year, was, we don't want to have a meeting with you. There's no point in it. I said, okay. So I was disappointed by that. So the next thing I did was, we went to the tax map. We got the addresses and names of everyone who owns a lot in Huntington neighborhood. And I sent to each one of them a letter, basically with the same information that I'd given Mr. Ingram before, a copy of the plans, the photo sims, the surveys, information on health and safety, information on property values. I never heard a word from anybody. So no one was, you know, seemed to have any interest in meeting with us, Echo Site, T-Mobile, at that point in time, or any time. So I said, well, if they won't call me back, I'm gonna go knock on some doors. And I don't typically do that as a zoning attorney. But I wanted to get the message to the people because a lot of times, people are just complacent. You know, it's easy to sign a petition saying no. But do you really know what you're saying no to? Because you really haven't had a real conversation with someone. So it was a one-sided conversation. So I went and knocked on some doors. I started with Mr. Ingram. I spent about thirty minutes from his, at his house, talking to him. Then I drove down to the end of the cul-de-sac on Huntmore Drive. And I spoke with Mrs. Ray. She was very kind. You know, she said, look, my husband and I are technology people. I get it. We need wireless. I'm worried about property values. So one of the things that we had already ordered is a property impact study. You've got a copy of that. You've got the executive summary, which I suggest you read because the, the study's about an inch thick. And these people are experts in doing these type of analyses. And basically, what they do is they go to York County, York County, they look at other tower sites where there've been property sales, residential property sales, to determine what the price per foot impact has been on resales or new construction since the tower was built. And they do it in radiuses. You know, they get further out, further out. Well, their professional conclusion was, and this has always been the case, that the construction of the tower would not have any impact on the values of the adjacent properties. Now, I know, that's not one of the elements that you're looking at tonight in terms of rezoning. That will come up. Because even if we get the property rezoned, we're required to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get this approved, which is another public hearing. And we will have to make a showing of fact that we are not impacting property values. So these residents will have that opportunity to attempt to rebut that testimony. You know, I talked to several people out there. Some people said they didn't have a problem with it. They say, look, you know, I work from home. I've got a Verizon and a T-Mobile phone. I need my phone to work. Other people were ambivalent. Obviously, some people were, no. So after I met with Mrs. Ray that day, I had my staff, one of my associates, call her, email her, probably three times, five times, can we come meet with you? Can we have a meeting just of the people who live on your street to discuss these issues with you, to hear your concerns and see how we can address them? So we were highly engaged, but none of those emails were answered. None of the phone calls were answered. But we kept sending information. Anything we could send them, we sent them, including the executive summary on the property impact value. So I think we've done, gone beyond, above and beyond in terms of trying to meet with the neighbors. Now, having said that, we have a new HOA president here tonight that I've just met. I would be more than glad to meet with him after this meeting tonight to discuss what his concerns are, if there was a way to compromise. The truth of the matter is, if you drive through this neighborhood, Huntington neighborhood, it's an older, mature neighborhood. And it's gotta change its topography. Really, the only place, based on my driving around, that you're gonna be able to see any part of this tower is at the higher elevation of Huntmore Drive. And then you're really gonna have to look for it. From the rest of the neighborhood, you're probably not even gonna see it, based on the photo simulations and based on the, the way the houses are arranged and the heavy tree cover. You know, it's very mature landscaping, mature trees. So I think that's very important to, to point out. You know, the things I heard when I spoke to the people that live the closest are, you know, the noise. Heckel Boulevard's loud already. We already get all kind of noise here. And as I stood on Mrs. Ray's front porch, I said, yeah, you're right. I can hear all those cars. You know, there's a fire station across the street. I'm sure when the fire truck rolls out, there are sirens blaring and that, that causes noise during the busy times of day when people are coming and going from work and to school. I'm sure there's more noise. So I told her, I said, well, let's figure out a way to not increase the noise, but decrease the noise. And that's when I offered. I said, perhaps as a compromise, what we can do, because at the end of that cul-de-sac, there are already Fraser firs, but it stops at the right side of the cul-de-sac. I said, we can extend those Fraser firs out. I mean, landscaping is not that expensive. And it's a good compromise. So those Fraser firs, they get thick, they block noise, and they improve the aesthetics. I also told her that we would take every effort to minimize the number of trees that we take down at the actual tower site. And then I shared with her the report on property values, as well as the information on health and safety. So I think we've done everything we can to try to eliminate the impact to the people that live the closest to the tower site. Yeah, one of the things that is important here tonight is, and this is boring stuff, but the comprehensive plan, right? Because staff quoted a couple of reasons why the rezoning would not be compatible with the plan. Well, I would take the position that this communications facility, if the property is rezoned, the facilities would be compatible with the surrounding area. There are a lot of commercial uses surrounding this neighborhood. If you look on the opposite side of the neighborhood, there's storage units there, there's a strip mall there, some doctor's offices there. But there's plenty of commercial use. On the other side of Heckel, of Heckel Boulevard, you've got the county offices, county facilities, the fire station. You know, the reality of it is, is that this community must have wireless infrastructure. The system is at capacity. It needs additional capacity. You know, people working from home demand strong wireless connections. The growth in broadband is, and the usage is exponential. And this is not a big tower. The tower type and scale and its location in a wooded area is, is best placed on this property. You know, there was mention of the infill plan of Rock Hill. Well, the City of Rock Hill ordinance recognizes the need for improved wireless communications. And they've actually amended their zoning ordinance to allow certain types of wireless facilities in every zoning district, including all residential zoning districts. Now, they may not be communications towers, but they are poles, shorter poles, with what we call small cell facilities. So even Rock Hill recognizes the neighborhood, the neighborhoods need additional coverage as well. So one of the things on the application says, check the box. The comprehensive plan recognizes the need to do, well, one of the conditions is, recognize substantial change or change in conditions or circumstances in a particular locality. Well, the substantial change here and change in conditions is that more people are using wireless phones for everything now. They've cut the cord. There's an increased demand for broadband connectivity. And three, the capacity has been exhausted. So that is a change, a substantial change. And then another one of the criteria for meeting the, the intent of the comprehensive plan is to recognize changes in technology, style of living, and the manner of doing business. And that's what we're talking about here tonight, changes in technology. You know, the demand for wireless coverage and capacity. Right now, we're at 4G. The wireless industry is on the cusp of moving into what we call 5G, which is the next standard of wireless communications, which will require of wireless communications, which will require what we call a densification of the network. There's gotta be more coverage, more capacity, and closer proximity to the end users. And beyond 5G, we have what we call the Internet of Things, and that's a very complex subject, which I won't go into in detail, but it's coming, and you've got to be ready for it. You know, there are many municipalities, many counties, that are actually being proactive in adopting new ordinances to deal with what it's gonna take to have an orderly deployment of the next generation of wireless facilities. Even today, I was on a one-hour call with the municipal association. I know you're a county, but the municipal association is trying to, or they are, developing a model ordinance for this very particular purpose, to recognize the change in technology, the style of living. More people are working from home now. I mean, I work from home most days. I rely, I rely upon my wireless for connectivity as well. So, obviously, there is that change in technology, style of living, and manner of doing business. You know, one of the highlighted strategies of the comprehensive plan is to maintain and expand infrastructure and encourage employment growth. There's this whole concept known as smart cities. And many cities, both large, medium, and small in the United States today, are hiring experts to help determine how they can become a smart city. And that smart city entails the use of wireless technology and new evolutions of technology to, and the uses are endless, but it's to the economic benefit of the city and the county to ensure that the wireless infrastructure is in place to be able to meet the demands of that new technology.
How could? I'm gonna kinda get you to wrap this.
Yes, sir. I know it's a lot of information, but it's, you know, it's an important application for Echo Site and T-Mobile. We've been at this a long time, and I just want to give you the most information as possible. You know, I really don't have anything further. You know, I am very sympathetic, and I understand the issues here that have been raised tonight, but this application isn't just about the Huntington subdivision or Huntmore Drive. It's about all the citizens of York County and Rock Hill who rely upon, you know, continued connectivity and capacity. Now, that includes all those other areas that are covered by all these other sites surrounding this new proposed site. So, it's a bigger issue. You know, that's the silent majority that we don't hear from, but I can assure you that people want wireless coverage, and they want that capacity. They want to be able to make a 911 call, just like they want to connect to the Internet to do whatever. Having said that, we respectfully request that you approve the rezoning request. If you have any questions of me, from T-Mobile, Mary, are you here yet? Mary's here, all right. Who actually did the search for the site, be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak in favor?
I think Roger wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Counselor.
Yes, sir, welcome, Roger. I, uh, name and address for our clerk. Just give you a name and address.
Roger Baldwin, thirteen fifteen Heckle Boulevard. I'm gonna be a neighbor to this tower as well. I do not live in Huntington, but I do live on Heckle. And I can certainly empathize with the surrounding area of neighborhoods about the concerns they've addressed already. In going over those concerns, I think the, the devaluation, potential devaluation of properties is a main concern for many. And with this tower being a minimum of three hundred foot from the nearest house, and that three hundred foot being composed of heavy vegetation and trees, it's just very doubtful that something sticking above those trees, out of the sight of nearly all the neighborhood, would have that much of an effect on their housing value. As far as concerns for the noise, it'd be equal to an HVAC system in your home. And as far as the, the visuals go, you know, they can either make it a regular tower or blend it in with a tree line, excuse me, a pine tree tower. They will, they will put extra trees, plant extra shrubbery for anything they take down, and make this as appealing as possible. I don't want an eyesore in the neighborhood as well, but this is the lowest point of that entire property, that they could put a cell tower and be the least obtrusive of any. And at that point, the tower itself is a hundred and fifty foot tall, but the actual satellites are, are just a few feet wide, and the tower itself, at that point, is just a few feet wide. So, really, not sure that it'll be an eyesore as anyone imagines. But there's a couple of little things they mentioned about the kids not being able to play outside or being able to use that property, whether the property line is, again, is over three hundred foot from the tower. And as far as, if someone mentioned something about a flood damage is a concern, but the tower is at least seventy-five feet on the other side of the creek. And again, it's in the lowest part of that flood plain, so I don't really think that might be a concern to be worried about. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak in favor? We have a motion to close?
Who to close?
Discussion, all's favor say aye. Those no, do we have a new motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the motion for rezoning with the following Zoning conditions of one plus acre track on Heckle, tax map number five nine five zero 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 five five. That the, the construction of the cell tower be a standard design slash monopole, meeting the minimum standards set forth in section one fifty-five of the zoning ordinance. No stealth of mono pine or light design shall be permitted.
That's it?
Yeah, that's the condition.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Roddy.
I want to point out, you know, oftentimes, it's easy to, to get off on the wrong track or misinformation to get out, and it's easy for people to, to not want to welcome something without getting the proper information. I can think of several cases we've had come before this council where the staff said no, and we voted yes, and I can think of several times where staff said yes, and we voted no. I was sitting here thinking during, during the discussion, how many times staff has said no, neighbors have said no, and we've said yes, and the project turned out to the point where no one came back and said, hey, you know, we were wrong. We thought this was gonna impact our neighborhood. We thought this was gonna impact our community, and it didn't. The project turned out beautifully. And one of those projects I'm sitting here currently thinking about was a furniture store on, I think it's, um, Hurlong's Indie Hook. It was just outside, just in, in our chairman's district. The furniture store wanted to expand, and the neighbors came and said they didn't want these trucks, delivery trucks coming. They didn't want this, they didn't want that. Now, you ride down through there, it's a beautiful piece of property, they take care of it, the neighbors have never come back and said, you know, we were wrong. This didn't impact, it actually improved our neighborhood. I don't think this cell tower will offer any improvement, but I don't think it's gonna impact it negatively as well. During the presentation, you know, we always hear, when, when certain rezonings want to take place, you know, people say noise, people say traffic, people say home values. You know, traffic is there, noise is there. And here in the presentation, I've talked with Mr. Pennington on several occasions, I've met with, with Roger, I've seen some of the slides, I've gotten the information. I was welcoming, because I'm in a position to where I want to know all the information before I say yes or no. And sometimes, I think private citizens don't want to hear all the information. They make the judgment pre, before they get the information. I think a wealth of information was shared as to why, and some of the why-nots of going to other places. The visibility is at a minimum. You know, I, the reason why I put in the conditions, because I heard from some people that said they don't like the pine, they'd rather have a, a monopole, just a regular tower. So, that's why I offered to include the monopole, you know. But I think it's premature when people don't want to get the facts and sit down with people who are doing their due diligence, coming to the community, trying to reach out to make sure this is a good fit for any area. And you hear people say, yeah, we enjoy our cell phone use, but we don't want this in our backyard. You know, is it better to put it in other areas that some may deem a little more or less desirable? I don't think that's the right answer. Is it good to say, we don't need it? I don't think that's the case, because we've heard that 911 uses cell communication, our police, fire medic uses communication. It's one of those things that I asked a question earlier, if the county wanted to put a water tower somewhere or, or any other infrastructure in a place, that's gonna impact the community. We, this is one of those things that, you know, you hate to say unnecessary evil, but we have to have certain things in this community, whether it's water sewer, whether it's cell towers, or, or fire stations, or, or things like that. And it just, it struck me when I heard that all the attempts that were made to reach out to the community to say, hey, this is what we're looking at doing, give us your feedback, give us your input, how can we make this work? And no response comes back.
That's not true.
Well, that's...
And, and, you know, in a limited capacity on, on the response. And when you sit and put it all in, put it all together, you know, the property sits in a flood plain. You know, I understand staff made a recommendation that it may not be a good fit, but since talking to staff, find out the real concerns, that they're not as, as overwhelmingly concerned now as they probably were when this initially started. I was trying to make some notes here as we went along. The health concerns, no health concerns. Property values. They presented some information that could ease some concerns about maybe affecting property value. But we can't just sit and always go on speculation. I think th, these people have been in business so long, they've gotten it down to, they know how to gauge. Mr. Chairman, can you ask the crowd not to interrupt?
Go ahead, Bob. Yeah, if, if you keep it up, then you lose your argument. So, just let everybody speak their piece.
But just, just knowing and meeting with, with the property owner, meeting and speaking with Mr. Pennington, you know, I, and I empathize with the concerns, but when someone says, we're willing to address every single concern that you have, and people still say they don't want to talk, they don't want to discuss it. But I think this is a good, I still think this is a good fit for the property there's. And, and looking at the zoning, as of right now, if some way, somehow, this property owner could get a mobile home up in there and clearcut the land, he could possibly set a mobile home on this property right now, per the zoning code. And that would really outrage the neighbors. No one would want to, Roger, to clean that property out in some way, maneuver a, a trailer to move up in there, in which the current zoning will allow for a trailer to come on this property. And so, maybe some of the neighbors didn't know that, but, you know, looking into it, you see some of the alternatives. It is in a flood plain, so it's very limited of what could be placed there, but the zoning currently now says, a mobile home could be placed on this property. And me, if I was living in Huntington or anywhere close to it, I would much rather a cell tower be an option than a trailer being drug up in the, into the woods and clearcut. And you would really hear more traffic coming off Heckle into the neighborhood if the property owner decides to just cut every single tree down if he wanted to. You know, I've spoken with, with Andy several times and tried to get a better understanding as to why staff had some reservations about the property being rezoned and used for a cell tower. And, and so, I would like to, to get his staff opinion, as well as his personal opinion, about this property being rezoned to be used for a cell tower.
Andy, your own.
Yes, sir. Well, generally speaking, when you've got a, a situation like this, and Mr. Pennington did indicate that he had spoken to the planning director at the time, and this was recommended, I can't speak to that particular conversation, but I will say that when you've got a rezoning or something of this sort that doesn't fit neatly into a box, staff's going to err on the side of being very conservative and the most restrictive. In this particular case, the denial was really based on being restrictive and taking a conservative approach. This is one of those situations where staff makes that recommendation, however, councils in the position you're in today to look at it more of a holistic approach on, you know, how the neighbors respond, et cetera. So, for that, for that reason, I think that's, that's part of the reason for the denial was the conservative view taken.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one more point. And the fact that the graphics show that the closest residential home is a minimum of three hundred and two feet, and the other closest home is three hundred and eighty-nine feet, you know, and I understand if this thing was clearcut, and you can walk out and into this community and just see it from all sides, but that's not the case. The area's heavily wooded, buffered, and even more trees and shrubs are gonna be planted to obstruct any possible eye level view. Obviously, you can see it when you look up in the air from probably at the top of the hill, as, as the photographs show, but, you know, when we hear people say, you know, they don't want to walk out of their front door and see it, obviously, it will be covered with the trees, and if you look up in the top, top of the trees, yes, you'll be, be able to see the tip of it. But I don't think this is gonna negatively impact property values, but it's a much-needed infrastructure for the, for the entire Rock Hill community as well.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, they, I guess this, this property is unique, and the tower itself is in District Four, the Huntington is in District Seven, and then if you go across the street into Wedgewood, you're in District Six. So, this is three districts right there together. And I agree, I disagree with one thing Mr. Roddy said, it said, said the project didn't add, doesn't add value. I think if it didn't add value, we shouldn't do it. It does increase the, the wireless infrastructure, which is something that we all want, regardless of where, where we live. I, I had assumed that the, hadn't heard anything first reading, and now I know why. The neighborhoods with a denial of recommendation from the staff and the planning commission thought that it didn't, didn't anticipate that, that we might vote in favor of it. We have three readings for, for a reason. This is second reading in public hearing, and I've heard both sides, and I've, I've heard some stuff that I, I think, you know, there, there might be some, some worst-case scenario dealing, if, if there was an opportunity to sit down and, and talk and, and make the neighbors feel like it was less ugly, some kind of more, you know, show that, where they could feel that it was worth the, the wireless. I would love to see that happen between now and, and third reading. They, I'm only one vote. I would have a hard time supporting something that had a debt, both a negative staff recommendation and the neighbors didn't want it, but there's an awful lot of neighbors that do want it. You, you talked about putting yourself in my position. I don't have a cell phone tower next door, but I got one that might be close enough to fall on my house, but, but, I mean, it's, cellphone is, you can call it a necessary evil if you'd like, you can call it a modern convenience, whatever, whatever you like. I guess it depends on, on what you're doing. But I would like to see, it, it looks like there's, if, 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 what Mr. Pennington says is true, they, they might can make, get rid of some of that ugliness, I, being on the other side, you know, because some of the arguments act like the tower's on the property line, which if, if it's not. Anyway, that's what I would like to see between now and, and third reading, if there was a way to, 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 to just say, this is why we think it's ugly, and this is what we can do about it.
Anybody else?
Oh, I got...
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I forgot. The, I, I, they, I do want the, the condition, I mean, I, I, the, that's one reason I didn't second, was because of the, the condition. I, at first reading, we talked about how most of us would, would, would prefer a monopole, and I think that's probably true, and it's true to the people that I talked to, but I wouldn't want to eliminate that. I mean, if, if the neighbors say, come back and say we like it with a monopole, I, I think that's something we should entertain.
Would you remove that?
I'd be willing to remove that condition.
And are you okay with that?
And leave it open.
Christie?
And leave it open for discussion with the neighbors and the...
Okay. Michael, does he need to restate it again, or are we good?
You have a friendly amendment if the second agreed to the withdrawal.
Okay. Good enough. Anybody else?
I'm gonna save everybody the trouble of emailing me. I'm not gonna support this. And the reason is because it's not that, most, most things are ugly up close, this is ugly from a distance. I do understand the technological need for cell towers, but as a member of the zoning board of appeals, who will hear this next, again, that just reminds me of my long nights till ten-thirty on the ZBA. But I think that, you know, I, I ran for this seat because I sat out there in that audience asking counsel to help me with things that I thought were gonna be ugly, and in fact, they did turn out to be that way. So, I'm gonna stick by the people on this.
Okay. Any... Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson.
I have a couple of things. I know there's been a discussion about this RUD. I'd like to know by third reading if staff recommended that this be RUD. And if staff did recommend that this be rezoned at RUD, I'm a little curious how we're now objecting to it, saying that it violates... objecting to it, saying that it violates the land use plan. If it was our idea, it can't, it doesn't seem like it's a viable objection at that point. Also, I'm curious, there was a statement made, I believe by Mr. Pennington, that the fire department declined. I'm curious, is that York County or is that Rock Hill?
Rock Hill.
Yeah, it's Rock Hill right there.
Across the street.
And was, were we contacted about the Heckle area, which certainly would put it much farther away from any sort of residential area and less than a quarter of a mile away. I'm not trying to steal their cellphone tower from their yard, but it seems if you put it in an area that's not around houses, you may cure a lot of this. And I'd like to see, and I would want a condition added that talks about, that actually incorporates these trees, these Leland Cypresses that are being talked about putting out, and possibly seeing, I don't need to see a landscaper plan, but I'd like to get a, just a visual of the lot and where those trees would be, because it's hard, as I'm just sitting here trying to picture where that would sit on the property and how that would assist the neighbors in Huntington.
Ms. Cox.
I do want to thank the folks that came out and spoke. It's important for neighbors to get out and to actually speak your voice, and I appreciate you coming out. What I do want you to understand is I ran for this seat to also represent the people, and, and I'm committed to doing that. I do want to reiterate Councilman Williams' comment that there are three readings to this, and this council has a history of allowing the individual whose district this is in to try and get some discussions going and to see if there's something that can be changed between now and third reading. And I think that we need to do that in fairness to everyone that's up here. So don't misread anything that I think any of the, I think I might have a hard time supporting this at third reading with the information I have. But one of the questions that really concerns me, and I will echo the comments that Councilman Johnson raised, and wanting some clarification on those things, especially from our fire departments, and wanting to know if that in fact is true. But also, in looking at this, it's just strange to me, as someone who represents primarily the unincorporated York County, we are RUD, and it's strange to me that we have a rule that we're now implementing that says, we're going to put all of these cellphone towers out in the middle of the pastures of folks that I represent, but they, we shouldn't have any where the homes are that need to use them. I don't, I want some clarification as to where is a cellphone tower allowed by right? Is that solely in RUD if it is? And I think we need to make sure that we look at that when we're doing our zoning updates, because that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And does it, does it accomplish what we want it to accomplish? Those are, those are the questions that I'd like to see answered.
And I'll just...
Mr. Winkler.
I've been holding my comment, because I'll be honest, I'm, I've been undecided the whole time. I mean, I've had, you know, concerns because planning, the commission recommended denial, staff recommended denial, then I hear staff said, this is the way to do it, and then we denied it. And so that concerns me, like some other council members have said. You know, I understand that, and I believe in a person's right to use their property. You know, and so I've had mixed emotions all along, and I still do. I've had situations in my area, you know, some went the way I thought they would, some didn't, but where we met with neighborhoods and developers and hosted things and talked about things and worked out compromises. And sometimes we didn't work out compromises, and it died in the third reading, even when I supported it in my district and the other council members didn't. So, so it can get to third reading and still not happen. Tonight, from what I'm hearing, you know, it looks like it's probably going to make it to third reading, and I'm okay with that for now. But I still have a lot of heartburn, and I need some answers on, you know, some of this too, as far as that. It's, I can't tell you how I'll vote on third reading, but for now, we'll get through this, let it get to second reading, and let us get some answers back and give you all time to meet. Now, I can tell you, I don't think it would sit well with some council members, probably if the community just flat refuses and says, no, we're not going to meet with you, we're not going to do anything, then that doesn't show a willingness to even work at it. And I don't know, I know some council members might frown on that, but I'm just me saying that. But for now, I'll support it.
Mr. Williams.
I was just going to add, the question came up three times, that, about staff's recommendation, and I asked that at first reading, and what, what they told me, and Steve, I think, told me, so if I get it wrong, hopefully he'll can chime in, not to put you on the spot, but, was when staff's recommendation is based on the zoning, which is RUD, and RUD is in the middle of an urban area, so it actually doesn't fit. So the staff's recommendation was not necessarily based on whether or not a cellphone tower would fit there, because at that point, it was just based on the zoning itself. And, and as already has been pointed out, the cellphone tower is a question for the ZBA and not for the staff. So that's kind of...
Steve, do you want to add anything? Because you look like you're chewing at the bit.
Yeah. Let me just say that our recommendation, our report's pretty accurate. We had issues, first of all. Answer your question, Mr. Johnson, I never recommended a district. His question, he stated was very accurate. He asked me, what was the least intrusive district? And I told him, I never tell, we never tell an applicant which direction to go to and which district to pick. That's up to them. I provided him information, he moved forward with it. As far as our recommendation, we did not support this because of the proximity to the neighborhood. We felt the impacts, both visually and aesthetically, would not be compatible. Cellphone tower, in our mind, that close to a residential district, that was, we didn't feel was appropriate. And I thought we communicated that in our report pretty well.
Can the agenda, the reasons for denial for agenda be updated to reflect that? Because when you're reading this, that's not what I read when I read this over the weekend. And it'd be nice to get to actually reflect one of the reasons.
And apparently, I didn't get the answer from Steve, but I got the answer from someone.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make...
Yes, sir. Mr. Roddy.
Just to answer Mr. Johnson's question, there is a residential area located near our Heckle Main Street site, so...
Yes, there is.
It still is another, I mean, unless you put it out in...
There's two, it's on your side, eh?
Yeah. Unless, unless you want to move all cellphone towers and communication towers way out in Christie's district or over in Robert's district, you know, there's probably going to be a house relatively close, but the nearest house here is still 302 feet away.
Yes, sir.
And one last point. When we, when staff makes recommendation, it isn't always 100% yes or no v. 100% yes or no. It's oftentimes, we have to weigh certain things, and sometimes we're kind of caught in the middle and don't really have a strong opinion either way. So just keep that in mind when we make recommendations to you. Sometimes it's not always so clear cut, and we don't have that ability to just say, well, you know what, we're 50/50, and we can't make a recommendation. We have to, we always try to err on the side of the, that's in the best interest of the county.
When I heard the question raised, I kind of thought it was just what the planning commission would say, well, you know, if you want something, this would probably be the closest thing, but it wasn't. Anyway, Ms. Cox.
I think, I think it's a system, we've talked about this as a council, a system that allows public input before a recommendation is made is exactly why I think we can avoid that by allowing public input before, before a recommendation's made. I'll just insert that.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Mr. Williams.
I did find that where they got those reasons for denial, it's in the packet written as those reasons. The conversation with Steve did relate to cell towers, as he indicated, but the, but the zoning specific is under reasons for denial on page 168.
Let me, let me go ahead and wrap this up, hopefully quickly. I just have one question, and I don't know if the lawyer or if our staff, but there was comments by HOA people initially that, well, hey, this one acre's the problem. If it was anywhere else on the land, we're okay with it. And that's why I asked the question, I thought it was so important. Is there another area that's practical, or is this the site that has to be on that land? Somebody? Anybody? Yes, sir.
I had that conversation just before the meeting started with the new president of the HOA, but I'm not very clear exactly where it is he's talking about in terms of, was this, this acre's one, Mr. Baldwin owns adjacent property, it's about three acres. Twelve altogether, some's on the opposite side of it. Yeah. That small corner, it's about residential property as well as... Yeah. I'm really not sure exactly where it is they would want us to put the site, but I'm open to talking to them about that.
Okay.
It's residential on both sides that it's like, you know, you get off one corner and stuff on another.
Got you. Well, let me go ahead and just wrap it up by pointing out, I know the property owners, they retired from having the best restaurant in Rock Hill, in my opinion. So I certainly don't want to do anything that they disagree with, but at the same time, I just, when I first heard about this, I just thought, that's not the place for a cell tower. And I know Mr. Roddy asked to allow it to get past first reading, which I gladly did for him. I've heard the outcry now from the people that live nearby, and because I didn't really feel like it was appropriate, in addition to the reinforcement I'm hearing from the neighbors, I'm going to have to, and I understand about giving it time, it's going to go to third reading if my count's right, so it'll have time for that process to work itself out. But I would strongly encourage that, because if I heard correctly, it's not going to go past that if it's not a lot of mutual agreement after tonight. But I'm going to have to just vote my conscience, I'm against it, so I'm going to vote no. All questions on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. No. Next item, rezoned, or hold public hearing, consider second reading on case number 1801, rezoned from RD1 to BD3 at 1029 Spratt Street in the Fort Mill community. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close up that, did I hear body language?
Move to close.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, public hearing case number 1802. And I'm going to give people a couple minutes to clear out.
I seconded it.
Second to close.
Michael made the motion.
Okay. Case number 1802, rezoned from RC1 to RUD1 at 4839 Willow Pine Road in the Clover community.
Motion to approve.
Well, wait a minute, it's a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, so.
So anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody? Yes, sir. In fact, come right forward.
My name is Bert Evans. I actually live at 41, I'm sorry, 7160 Marlin Avenue in Gastonia. I am buying this piece property. I am the purchaser of it. Right now, everything around it is zoned for the RUD1, and there's a small piece that is labeled RC1. And I'm buying the whole piece, so I would like to get this rezoned to RUD1. That's the purpose of it. RC1 has a restriction of non-commercial equestrian use, where the RUD1 has a commercial equestrian use. And I asked a question with everybody and said, what is the, what is the definition of commercial? And if you board horses, you have to have commercial rating. So that's what I'm trying to do, hopefully in my older years, that's something I can do and get a little bit income from.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider, or hold public hearing and consider second reading case number 1803, rezoned property from UD to RC1 at 1499 Twin Lakes Road. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do we have a...
Close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Can we have a new motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, hold public hearing, consider second reading case number 1804, rezoned property from UD to RUD at Curtin Ferry Road. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Need a new motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, Mosley Architects to provide a family court update. Yes, sir, welcome.
My name is Chris Study with Mosley Architects. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight to present the color selections for the exterior and interior finishes for the Family Court project on West Main in Rock Hill.
That's the building looks pretty grand.
So what you see up here on the screen is the exterior rendering of the building. It's currently under construction. It has a red brick for the primary material, and then a mixture of different materials on the exterior that are represented on the board here. We've got a zinc roof that goes on the dome of the cupola, various white finishes here for some of the metals on the building. This precast here is the finish for the columns and the pediment, some of the classical detailing that you see there, and then gray for some of the other roofs that are not part of that kind of tower cupola element. Window frames throughout the exterior would be a clear anodized aluminum, similar to this sample here.
Is that a metal roof?
On the, yes, yeah. There is some flat roof, but mostly the roof that you're going to see is going to be the standing seam metal roof.
An artificial front, or is it part of the true roof?
It's a kind of a mechanical well, so it is kind of an artificial front, but that mechanical well is, it's all the way around, so you don't see any kind of backside of that roof.
So the roof material's going to be a, yeah, rubber membrane, or?
It'll be a TPO, which is a highly reflective, which helps the building shed some of the heat during the summer that it might get from the suns. It'll be white, yes. So on the interior, we've got the, several finishes here, and I'll kind of walk you through. What's up on the screen was what we developed during the design as some of our basis of design. And, you know, things, as you kind of go through and you develop and you evolve the design, some things might be a little bit different from the rendering to what the final submission of products that we get from the contractor would be. So primarily in the courtrooms, we've got these materials here. There's an accent paint color, there's a field paint color that is used throughout the building, that's kind of your primary color. And then broadloom carpet in the courtrooms, acoustical panels, dark wood for the benches and all the casework there. For the main lobby, you can see some of the detailing on the floor there with the three different colors of tile. These are the same tiles that are represented in that image there. But as we went along, some of the colors, we brightened them up a little bit from what was initially presented. The main entry, you have walk-off carpet that helps, you know, clean people's shoes off as they're coming into the building. And then in the offices throughout, we have carpet tile. The stairs will be a terrazzo tread.
All right.
A lot of terrazzo.
These are a, these are kind of a pre-manufactured terrazzo. It's like a terrazzo tile.
Pretty concrete.
Right, right.
Pretty concrete.
He doesn't know what he's talking about.
We learned that in admin building.
You have the misfortune of following up the admin building.
Yeah, we, sure. But this isn't a limited application, so it's only for that, that main stair.
Like terrazzo.
Right. Right. So, the, also, we have ceramic tile in the, all of the toilet rooms, the staff restrooms and the public restrooms with a solid surface divider that's kind of vandal-resistant, it's got through color all the way through, so that if anybody tries to scratch on there, it doesn't reveal a different color underneath. And then casework for just general office casework is gonna be this, this color here, and then, you know, white blinds for a lot of the windows throughout.
It's nice to really see all this construction come into fruition, although that was my joke about Bill sends a picture every week and it's all these grass. When's that wall gonna go up? But, Mr. Hamilton, do you have anything you wanna say, or?
No, we, we have to do those, and I say we, completely.
Or I should ask your boss, Angie. All right, we good then.
All right. Thank you.
Whether I like it or not, she likes it.
I got you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Next item, growth management coordinator to provide a monthly update. Welcome, Audra.
This is the first of my monthly updates to council on all the projects that I am working on and answering questions you have. When I switch positions, the projects I took with me are the impact fees, both Fort Mill and the general impact fee study, the stormwater utility district, stormwater ordinance revisions, York County ordinance revisions, phase one and phase two, the Cato Development Agreement, and the growth management definition. So, the impact fees for Fort Mill School District, we are on schedule, to the best of my knowledge. I did get some questions along the way about were we behind schedule, I was a little surprised. The consultant has done a great job, he's expedited everything. So, we are going to have an impact fees 101 presentation that was supposed to be at the planning commission meeting, but the consultant had a death in the families, so the planning commission requested that it be rescheduled before the vote, so it will be March 29th at 6:00 PM in the large conference room. That's open to the public, it's also open to council. I think it should be a very good presentation to give you a good overview of how impact fees work, so you're encouraged to attend as well. Also, just so you know, because it is in front of the planning commission, I had a very small window of opportunity to get that meeting scheduled. I did the very best I could to pick a date that worked for every member of the planning commission, it just was not gonna happen, so I know we're gonna have at least five members there, but others were gonna be on vacation that week, so.
Oh, that spring break week?
Yes, that's part of it. So, it was just very challenging. In fact, the consultant is flying back from his own vacation spring break to do this presentation, so that's the best date we could come up with. Then what should happen is the planning commission should see the report at their April 9th meeting, that is gonna be an action item, and they should be making the formal recommendation to council at that point. The next thing is it will go to first reading for council April 16th, and then there is a 30-day notice requirement by state law, and the second reading, public hearing, then will be May 7th, and then third reading will be May 21st, so that is the schedule.
So, I can get this logistics in my head correctly, so is this a county-wide reference for impact fees, or it's just gonna be focused on Fort?
Solely Fort Mill. This is solely Fort.
The other part's gonna come later.
I will, yes, that'll be the next slide.
All right.
That's okay. But I wanna, I want everybody to be clear on this, 'cause there's a lot of rumors going around about what's being voted on and all this. This is solely the Fort Mill School District impact fee that's going on this schedule. Now, the impact fees 101, however, that little presentation, that's applicable to all impact fees, that's just to give everybody an overview.
But the three readings you're showing will just be on Fort Mill?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Is there any timeframe on the other?
We had agreed, because Fort Mill was on such a expedited schedule, that the county agreed to kind of step back and let the consultant focus on Fort Mill School District first, so he's been working on that. We have done some stuff on the general, but I still think we're probably six to nine months out before we have the report for the general. And then the county impact fee, we had a, what I'm calling a kickoff meeting, February 27th. What that involved is we brought in all of the departments and elected officials that would possibly benefit from impact fees, so that was fire services, roads, EMS 911, the courts, and the sheriff. And we had meetings with them throughout the day on the 27th to just gather general information about their baseline information and their future needs. The impact fees, and one thing I will keep reiterating throughout this process, is impact fees are for capital improvements only. So, that means it has to be something that allows you to expand capacity to deal with growth. And the best example I can give you, what it cannot be used for is on roads, you can't use it for roads resurfacing, patching, or anything like that, you have to use it to widen the road, or to expand an intersection, or something of that nature. So, for that reason, the one that looks like will not benefit and will not be part of the impact fee study going forward is fire services, there were no capital improvements identified from the fire services director. There were no buildings planned, and there were no acquisitions of major capital goods. So, if anything changes, we can talk to the consultant, but that's what came out of the meeting. And then the roads, one thing that I do caution this council about is most of the expansion, if not all of it, is on state roads, so the consultant is going to do some research and see about using impact fees to improve state roads. That issue doesn't come up all that often for him, so he was gonna look into that. But as of now, we are looking at state roads as well as county roads. As I said, we're in the data gathering phase, the consultant has asked us for some information about our capital improvements, especially about the bond building projects and all of those. And as I said, that impact fees 101 is applicable to the general impact fee study, and so he will touch on that as well. And then there were questions that came up initially, and I just wanna touch on a couple things that will definitely be worked on as we go through the process. Yes, you can limit fees to certain geographic areas, such as if the fees are for road improvements, but all those road improvements are only in, say, the Fort Mill or Lake Wiley area, that doesn't make sense for the rural areas to pay for it, so you can do things like that. And then there's different types of fees, how you do this, you can do it for your future capital improvements, which is where your capital improvements plan comes in, but there's also provisions for if you oversized a facility to address growth needs, that you can use the impact fees to basically refund those oversizing, so, so you can capture some of that back. Made Kevin happy. So, there's a lot of, lot of detail in this type of study, and so that's why it takes a while to do these, these types of analysis. So, any question on the general impact fees? Stormwater Utility District, this is the one you approved March 5th. The consultant is already working on preparing the fee schedule, policy manual, appeals manual, and ordinance. What we are gonna be proposing to council is to have basically an interim fee for fiscal year 2018, 2019, so that we can collect a little bit of money to start funding some of the costs to get it started, and then come back at the next fiscal year and have the final fee at that time. Because during fiscal year 2018-19, we need to collect data for the project, so we need to do lidar ortho-photography, assess the current conditions, and then establish the final fee. So, you're gonna see basically two phases on the ordinance and the fees that are coming in. And then, one of the things that I am working on with staff is I'm setting up meetings with other municipalities and counties that have stormwater utility districts and talk to them about lessons learned, what worked for them, what suggestions they have as we go forward, and we're gonna be doing those over the next couple weeks.
So, I'm not confused.
Mm-hmm.
Budget we're getting ready to deal with, or you, help me out here, you just, you're gonna have just a low fee, just a starting point, or?
Yes, because the way you calculate the fee, the most accurate method is to calculate the impervious area for every parcel. I can't calculate the impervious area for every parcel until I have all of the lidar and ortho-photography. So, one of the things you are gonna see in the budget request is a rather large number to do that, but that is then refundable by the Stormwater Utility District as soon as I have the money. So, what we wanna do is collect some money to start refunding the general fund for that data collection, and then when you get all the data in, you can set the final fee, and that is what helps you make it very defensible, 'cause you can say, look, this is the data I used to set your fee.
So, our infrastructure at present is adequate for what we're trying to start with? I mean, there's not a question of that being an issue at present?
No, we'll have some projects too, that we wanna get started on as soon as possible, but like I said, it takes money to do the projects, so it's baby steps to get it up and running.
'Cause I'm trying to get a strong grip in my head of, I know we kinda started with the watershed district three years ago, or whenever it was, and then that never really got any traction, and then we kinda drifted to this, and, can you give me any better seed in my head about how we ended in this direction?
What had started was, as we were being fund, as we were funded by the general fund, there's a couple issues going along with that, is it was paying just for the very basic level of service, and then we're very reactive in things that we, we fix. So, this is kinda how we got off in this direction. It had come up about 10 years ago, and there was gonna be a study, then the recession hit, so we had come up, as, as we were coming out of the recession, staff brought it back to me to say, you know, we really think this has merit, and that's kinda how we got off on this direction. And to establish a stable funding source so that we could maintain our infrastructure, enforce our ordinances, and stay in good standing with our MS4 permit. And all of that does help us protect the lake and protect our waterways, because if we're not maintaining it, that means things are being discharged.
And that's where I was trying to get a grip, 'cause here again, I know it was Lake Wiley Watershed, hey, Charlotte, does it this way, great model, and then we kinda drifted to this, and I didn't know if we had issues in other parts of the county, or is this just a natural better feed for that protection of round Lake?
It's, it's for the entire county, it's not just for Lake Wiley, it's for the entire county, so it protects, it protects all the waters.
Sorry.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I know that we, I think the council had said, I think it's the majority, but if it's not, if we could just make sure that the total amount of the general fund money that was actually being used currently to deal with stormwater issues, that that is identified, and we talked about having that removed from the budget, so that the folks, at least the council, can make a decision about whether or not that needs to be removed from the budget so that it's not double taxed. You guys have got a handle on that.
I will make sure when the budget's presented, that those monies, for instance, if we reduce the planning budget by that amount, is broken out, and that would in a sense be a cost savings, and then the additional costs coming on, if y'all vote to approve, then sort of replace that. But it will be broken out, so it's very clear, there's gonna be no hiding anything in the budget the way it's presented.
Thanks. The only other thing was, I know that, Audra, I appreciate you following up after our last council meeting when that stormwater utility was approved, and I guess we still have three readings. I requested a map of the location of the current infrastructure that we're talking about, and Audra sent that to me. I think it's important that, I just haven't forwarded to you guys, I've been too busy. I think it'd be good for the council to see that, and also to see how much we think that is not there, and that we're not aware of, and how much of the total infrastructure is potentially not been located. I think that's an important factor to make sure folks are aware of.
And when you're ready, Audra.
The next one is the stormwater revisions, that's on your agenda tonight to approve the contract with Wolfert. Assuming that it is approved, we'll set up a kickoff meeting as soon as possible. I'm estimating nine to 12-month process on that one, it may be a little bit quicker than that, but I would generally estimate at least nine months, so. And then, one of the things I wanna highlight on that is, 'cause you're gonna hear this a lot in the coming months, council has requested all of these things, consultants, the first thing they do when they come back to me is they say, well, what does council want? What does council think? We need to get input from council. So, you're gonna start seeing requests from me about having a workshop, or is it on an individual basis, and all of that, and I just wanna prepare you for that, because you're probably gonna look at me some point and say, I've just done three workshops with you, I don't want to do anymore, and that's what happens with these projects, and it's very problematic to try and have them all on the same workshop, because it gets very confusing. So, that's, that's what's coming. And that's a good thing to get at ordinance revisions.
Just remind us that we put all this in, we complain about it.
And.
We're the ones that did it.
If I may interject, just real quick, to piggyback on that statement, these, this, it is, is of paramount importance, because these will have many years' worth of impact to the citizens of York County, so it's gonna be impossible to get all seven of you together for every one of these workshops, so I guess I need at least some sort of tacit understanding from council that we're gonna get as many of you as possible and motor ahead, with the understanding that you're gonna have to vote on a lot of these through the ordinance process, so you're gonna have, be able to have questions, but to, to get down to the nuts and bolts of some of the stuff's really gonna require some time that a council meeting will not allow for. So, I guess more than anything, just to lay it out there, that this is just gonna be a necessity.
Well, you just, y'all need to just send the questions out ASAP, because the longer the deadline you have, the closer we get to that before you ask us, that's when you really have to cluster muck.
Yes, we don't wanna do that, we wanna make sure you guys have as much time.
We've got workshops scheduled for three weeks at a minute.
Yes, you do.
Right.
Yes, you do.
Plus budget workshops that are gonna be coming up, so, anyway.
And I do wanna, and it's a standing offer, I don't wanna have to keep making a standing offer to council, if there's a workshop you cannot attend, you can call me, and I'll be more than happy to meet with you individually at your convenience to go over whatever it is that, that you missed. So, for ordinance revisions, these are the first phase, you had your workshop on this. Again, just to refresh everybody's memory, special events, landfills, mining, and concrete plants, which will be called non-metallic mining, and then lighting standards. You should have received copies of those ordinances, I believe I sent them out last week. If you did not receive them, or they're lost in your email, and you need me to resend them, just let me know. Tomorrow night, we're having a special called Planning Commission Meeting. It will start at 6:00 PM at the Heckel Complex. Again, it is open to anyone who wants to attend, but it's not a public comment or input meeting. Tyson Smith will be here, and we are going to go through all of the ordinance revisions with the planning commission in what I'm gonna call excruciating detail, because this, again, is an action item, and they should be making recommendations to the council at that point. So, they haven't really discussed these, so it should be a rather lengthy meeting tomorrow night. Then, you do have a council workshop scheduled for March 26th, that is to go over these ordinances that I sent to you, and walk you through not only what the ordinances say, but what some of the impacts will be, positive and negative, and to get some initial feedback from you on, is this what you were expecting after you walked out of that workshop and gave everyone your thoughts on the issues? So, there are a couple that will have some substantial impacts to existing uses, and I do want to bring them to your attention as well. At this point, because you did ask for these with all due speed, if everything goes okay, or there's no big changes, I would schedule this for first reading on April 2nd. And then, we would go April 16th and May 7th to do all of those readings. Any questions on those revisions or that process? That leads us to, you haven't even finished your first round, and Tyson's asking me about round two, 'cause he took your deadline very seriously, you said you wanted to be done this year, and I went back and looked at his contract, and he had promised to get this done by November for you. This is the major update to chapter 155, that is our zoning code. So, the process has started. He has asked me to start scheduling stakeholder meetings, we have those scheduled for April 23rd and April 24th. This is the time to tell me if you are not comfortable with moving forward, because the contract says you're gonna spend $81,000 on this initial data assessment, getting all this feedback, and then what was left for a future approval was to do the actual work. So, you're gonna see in your budget a request for approximately $200,000 to do the whole, to do chapter 155. So, I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory on that, because if you're not comfortable with that, I for one would not wanna spend $81,000 of the county's money, and have you come back in a month from now and tell me you really didn't wanna do this. So, everybody's good?
155 relates to which one?
Zoning code.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay.
So, I wanna clarify too, that is the zoning code, those are permitted uses, development standards such as setbacks, open space, we do have some road details in there, ZBA, how the ZBA functions, it does not include chapter 154, which is the preliminary plat process and final plat. So, just wanted to make sure you knew that. So, just wanted to make sure you knew that. So, the stakeholder meetings, we are set on those dates. We will also have a special called Planning Commission Meeting on April 24th, because the consultant wants to solicit feedback from the planning commission on things that they have issues with or would like to see addressed in the code. That leads me to your next workshop request. To stay on schedule, they're requesting a workshop with council, your first one on this issue, to find out what you want addressed in these code updates. So, that would be the first week of May. So, I, I'm asking, do I have your permission to start scheduling that meeting? All right. Any questions on the second round of ordinances?
Audra, the stakeholders' meeting and a special called Planning Commission Meeting, that's both, both on the 24th?
Yeah, what we'll do, the way these work with stakeholder meetings is, we will schedule them starting at about 9:00 AM, and we will go most likely on the 23rd, because we're going to have one small group of the general public, and we're probably going to have to have that after normal business hours, give them a chance. So, we'll probably go from like 9:00 till, 9:00 AM till about 8:00 PM on the 23rd, and then on the 24th, we'll do the same thing, we'll start about 9:00 AM, and we'll go through all those meetings, and then convene the planning commission at 6:00 PM.
So, basically, that's just the publics, that's the public giving their input.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the stakeholders are all the groups. We get the planning directors from the neighboring communities, we get staff, we get commercial developers, then commercial end-users, you know, commercial businesses, we'll get the residential community, the general public are our top ones that we're picking, so. The Cato Development Agreement, that was something I carried over. We, we are working on it, I've met with the developer, I've met with staff, and some of the things that are just a little challenging to work through before we get a final development agreement to even bring to council to discuss is, there's the timing of the Pennies projects versus the rate of the development, there's also the future impact fees, how they play into this kind of development, and then county's involvement in some of the needed improvements. So, those are discussions that are ongoing.
Audra, back to South Bridge. We are doing second reading tonight on Project Leah, which is inside South Bridge.
Yes.
We had this discussion at a Economic Development Committee meeting the other day, but I'm curious to hear your idea. There was a thought there that, yes, we should just go ahead and approve Project Leah without ever having a agreement in place. Does that make, from a developing standpoint, developer standpoint, does that make you nervous, or is that just?
No, actually, it was a blessing to actually have a project, because one of the things we've been struggling with is development agreement is, when the developer had no project and no idea when they were going to build out, both parties were like, how do we address the Pennies project? How do we address all this? So, with a project coming in, it's actually helped the discussions now, and it's laid out a framework of how do we proceed, what, what improvements are coming in now, which ones will we push off to later within that phase, how do we address Pennies? So, it's actually been a huge relief to have a project to focus on and get us kind of moving on a development agreement. What will come is how to integrate Project Leah and that partial with the development agreement, and if we do at all, so.
Thank you.
And then, the last one was gross man, growth management, excuse me, growth management definition. I sent an email to the entire council in February. Andy and I talked about a starting point for this, he suggested maybe I reach out to you first, see your ideas. I've had three council persons respond, so if you haven't responded, I'm going to ask if you have any thoughts on it, that you give me a response hopefully by March 23rd, and then by the time I come back to y'all, I'll actually have a working definition for you to look at. And the topic of the email was very broad, it was, you know, you throw around the term growth management, how do you frame it? What, what is it that you are thinking growth management is? And I throw, I threw out some suggestions, it didn't, I didn't mean that you had to answer the questions, but it was just kind of different ways to think about it of, you know, is growth management, you view it as, you want so many people to move in, or, you know, the actual population growth in a certain time period, is it, you want so much economic growth, or there's types of industries? Because if you give me a starting point, then I can kind of work within that framework. And if you don't, I've had some say, boiling it down is, you're okay with growth, but you want it to pay for itself. And that seems to be the consistent among the three that I've gotten so far, that wasn't really looking to completely stop growth, but you definitely want it to pay for itself. So, that may be the starting point of the definition.
So, let me ask you this, I mean, growth management, just by the two words, is defined.
Mm-hmm.
So, are you saying you want us to more or less provide options for growth management?
No, I just want an idea, because I've heard very, over the year or two, I've heard pretty wide-ranging of what growth management means. Some are, growth management is, I just want development to pay for itself. Others are, I don't think we can do any more development until we get caught up, so let's stop development for a little bit, a little, little general on that.
We had a big discussion during the strategic plan about exactly what growth management meant, and we realized that we needed to do it. That might have been the day you had heart problems.
He had his mask on that day. Covering his ears.
Well, that was breathing, not hearing. I couldn't breathe.
I will, I, just, council set this as one of its top six priorities.
Absolutely.
To have not, we're all busy, we all need to respond. It does not take long to respond, it's not that difficult, especially since we've picked it as a priority. If we all don't respond, we're going to argue later about what the answer we're going to get. It'd be much better, in my opinion, that you get this stuff into Audra so that we don't have, she can kind of pick the consensus from the group as opposed to us sitting around arguing like we have, or discussing, arguing, discussing like we have the past few years on what is growth management. It'd be nice to walk into a meeting and have a definition ready so we can move forward.
And I think it would be helpful, I mean, I know Audra said we don't have to reply all to all council members, because then that would cause a chain, but I think it's important, I'd like to hear what other folks have said. I mean, I've said my piece, I'd like to, I think it's important for us to know that and not just hide the ball when we're talking about it, because it makes a difference when we're making decisions up here too.
Might be helpful when you're done, if we could all in some way see kind of.
Absolutely.
Audra, one thing that, one thing that I would like to see is, what is county management's definition of growth management? Because sometimes I'm torn, I'm not torn, but sometimes I feel like the county, I feel like we as a group are torn between, you know, the county wanting to attract new people and have new people move in, and, you know, I don't know, I have, like, you know, like they're saying, we don't, I don't know what everybody else up here calls growth management, but for me, growth management might be in opposition to what county management thinks growth management is. And I would just, I would just like to know and see, see what county management's definition is, because if, if the goal of the county is to, you know, attract more people, bring in more people, and, you know, make more in taxes and fees and things like that, then I just, I just want to know that. I think that the people of York County that, who already live here, would like to know that. And in that case, if that is the case, how do we all work together toward a common definition of growth management?
Mr. Roddy.
I, I think we get to be, if we polled everyone up here and people in the general public, I think it's a fine line between what we would say growth management is and what the general consensus of the public, because some people will say, you just want to stop the growth, and others will say we're trying to manage it. So, I think it's a real fine line in how we define it and what we do to control the growth versus some, in some people's eyes, stopping it. So, I think we do, we're charged with a real tough task of walking that fine line so that the general public don't say, well, you're trying to stop the growth. And then on our end, doing things that we feel aren't helping us control it. I think we got a real tough job to make sure, one, we win the consensus here, as well as a consensus with the general public, because we got a lot of, it'll be a lot at stake if we don't do it right. You know, I think we can look at some areas that didn't grow, and what happened to them five, 10, 15, 20 years later, versus, and we can look at some areas that just blew the walls down and grew so fast, so big, it wasn't, it wasn't a good, good fit for everyone. So, we have to be real careful what we do to control it, but don't stomp it out. So, I think we got a real fine, it's a real fine line for us to tread.
Mr. Williams. I was just going to say, I think the process that Audra is following is, is an excellent way to come up with the, with the county, with the council-wide definition of growth management, we just all need to participate. At some point, we'll put them together and look at them and, and go, and if, if our definition of growth management is different from the county management's definition, that's, we, a lot of times we do stuff up here that maybe we don't need to do, that's one thing that we do need to do, we say, here's the definition, do something with it.
Just.
I'm not sure, it might be good to hear what management thinks is growth management, I'd rather hear from the experts on it, but I think you're heading in the right direction, in my opinion, by asking for the seven of us and congealing all that together, because ultimately, this is what defines and controls growth management. So, our definition, as close as you can get to it, is, is what it's going to be, because we're the ones that vote on everything that comes before us, on whether it gets approved or not. So, you know, whatever everybody else thinks doesn't matter a whole lot, it's at least four of us agreeing on it.
Mr. Shanahan.
Agreed, and, and it's real easy for management to give you what they feel a good definition of growth management is, that that's not hard at all. But the bottom line is, is what Councilman Winkler just said, is, once a majority of you decide, taking all the information, this is the definition of growth management, then that's the definition of growth management. Our job is then, is to move forward with what you all have approved. And again, it's, you know, it's easy to talk about what it is, that, I mean, we can give you that.
Yeah, and I don't want to drown in this, we need to wrap it up, but, I mean, Bump's point was what I was going to get ready to say, that's why I really didn't respond, because it's like, I feel like staff sometimes bones are picked, and this is kind of in response to that, because growth management means, in my mind, smart management. What county does not want to have growth? If you don't grow as a county, you die. So, certainly, it's a great problem to have, it just needs to be done, and what, I'm sure many council members feel like, we need to get ahead of the growth, instead of react to the growth. Okay, you got what I was going to say, so that's good, I don't have to send an email. Yes, ma'am.
Two last points, because I don't want to forget to mention this one. I was talking to the impact fee consultant, his name is Carson Weiss from Tischler-Byss. He actually has offered to come down and kind of just work it in with another meeting to do a presentation to y'all on growth management and some ways you can fund growth besides impact fees, and kind of give a basic one-on-one on that. And I thought that might be a nice thing, if y'all are interested. Okay, we'll try and get that arranged, it may take a couple months, just because he's basically doing a favor, and he's, I got to arrange it with that, so I thought that was nice. And then I did want to mention, because as you talk about impact fees, and with social media and things spiral and all that, I want to make sure I bring this up. Tiga K reached out to Councilman Johnson, and they asked to, I would not call it they're going to join our impact fee study, but they wanted to use the consultant that's already on board, and we're well on our way with that process. They've talked, and I think they have a contract, is that right?
I think they're considering it tonight.
Yeah, so, so that we can basically share resources and maybe share and split meeting costs. So, that is my update, and I think the most important question I have right now is, have I missed anything that you think I'm working on that I didn't touch upon? So, tell me.
You've got a great job. The only thing I would ask about is the, are we waiting for the new hire to do the, I mean, transparency was one of the biggest things. What, the process that the council asked to make, to ensure that there was public and input before there's all these recommendations made, can you help us?
No, Ms. Cox, Steve actually did, did some research on this. We don't think that it's going to require any ordinance revisions to really flip-flop the process, so we're actually just talking about a launch date on how this whole thing will get started. So, we're going to double-check one more time with legal to verify, but as far from our research, there will be no ordinance revisions needed to start that, that process.
I guess I have one question that maybe didn't travel with you to the new position, but as, we have talked about one other study that I can think of, is transportation infrastructure in areas that RFAT doesn't cover. And I'd kind of like to just know where we're at, or where that.
What happened, what's going on with that right now? Thoroughfare Plan did stay with planning, but I talked to Steve about that. The consultant has a list of items, they are trying to schedule a workshop with y'all to present everything, but your time has gotten so tight that it's become very challenging, is my understanding, and that's what they're working on, to present that information to you, so.
One of the things that, to make what you, you just spoke of, Councilwoman Cox's work, I've asked Linda to start putting together town hall meetings for me, so I can go out in the community and talk about goals and objectives, and we can do some of the same thing as these issues get completed and we're moving forward, and y'all are happy with them, then we can go out in the street, we can make sure that our citizens know about them.
Kent, before you step down, can you just, I mean, it's great to have a team approach. So, another town will, hey, let's work with you, no problem, but clarify again exactly what you said about Tiga K.
Tiga K is, was really hoping to co-op as much as anything, our procurement process, to go through the.
That's kind of what.
That's essentially what we're doing, however, with the Fort Mill School District, getting priority was based more on their immediate need with their capital facilities plan. Quite frankly, my, from a staff recommendation standpoint, is we do not let anybody else jump line. I think we need to move forward with this, it's a clear council directive, and I think Mr. Weiss is well on his way with our process to where it would be, as much as anything, as through a data gathering process, would be beneficial to Tiga K.
Yeah, well, that's kind of when I worked to form the I-77 Alliance, it was kind of tough to get it formed, and then when we did, we had one or two counties wanting to jump on board, and it's just like, you know, we spent the money and the foundation, and a lot of my legwork time, I just wanted to make sure we were making sure that it was equal share, kind of thing. But I think Mr. Johnson had a comment.
One of the questions was how we potentially get the thoroughfare plan. We have a public hearing set for the budget on a Wednesday night typically. Last year, I walked in here, I think one person, maybe two max stood up, we were out of here in less than 20 minutes. Perhaps we would tack on this, we're all going to drive to York, I'd rather spend an hour here, it takes me 45 minutes to get here, so I might as well spend some time, better well-served. I've never seen the budget public hearing last more than 20, 30 minutes, just nobody comes and talks about it, for whatever reason, so.
Okay.
Be beneficial for that, so.
Hey, I agree, but not under these circumstances, I would agree that that's probably, that's a public. And even if you just pushed, if you said we will start as soon as the other one ends, that is fine, and we'll go as long as we can, so. Just a suggestion. Thanks, Audra.
All right, thank you.
Next item, Ms. Love asked for this to be placed on the agenda, discussion regarding, and I'm going to let Ms. Love kind of clarify, discussion regarding USB line in District 2.
Thank you. So, in looking at my definition of growth management, which is more about planning for growth, not stopping it or controlling it, or even really managing it, it's planning for it, and my goal is to get ahead of, of growth. One thing that concerns me a little bit, even though I support it, is the Fort Mill School District and their impact fees, because the next best place, I'll give you that, the next best place is going to be Lake Wiley and Clover area for people to move to. So, if someone's moving and they, they possibly want to build a home, and, and they look at that as a, as a hurdle, which a lot of, most people will not, but some may, then they're going to look to our schools, our school district's great, and they're going to look to move to our area. So, in an effort to try and, you know, do the opposite of what Councilman Winkler has done, where he has wanted to expand his USB to have water and sewer, to, to bring people to that area, what I'm looking to do is to withdraw the USB some to slow that growth. So, if they are looking to come here, then I call it kind of like a little, like kind of mini sprawl, I want to keep them in a compact area, as compact area as I can, and in speaking with the, I've met with the Town of Clover, and we've had a workshop with the Town of Clover and the mayor and the council there, and we're kind of all in. And we're kind of all in agreement of where we are on growth and what we feel like we can do to plan it, give ourselves a little bit of space, not stop it, we're not asking for moratorium or anything, but to, just to delay growth beyond where our USB currently is. And so what I would like to do, and I've spoken with Audra and Andy, and they can maybe expound on it a little bit, because all my best suggestions come from them. So if, Andy, maybe you can...
Yes, ma'am. Just in real general terms, and I may, if you'll forgive me, Mr. Chairman, if I may touch on item number four. But in general terms, utilities are tied to growth management. You know, if there's water and sewer there, then the growth's gonna come. In this particular case, the USB would provide a, just philosophically, a growth management tool for Ms. Love's district. And if, and this is where that comes in, coming up with the reasons why I would leave to Ms. Love and care for her district, however, the USB line does accomplish that goal, if it's implemented. However, it would require comp plan amendment, and we would have to go through that process to move the USB line. So with that being said, if that is a goal the council would like us to work on, I think you saw through Audra's presentation, the things that we are currently working on. If council would like to add to that list, a comp plan amendment, we would certainly do that. However, given the, we got a lot on our plate. So with that being said, to answer Mrs. Love's question, yes, moving the USB line in, choking it in, certainly will have an effect on achieving, slowing the pace of growth in the Lake Wiley district. But there's the function of actually moving the line that we need to consider, too.
So Mr. Roddy's hand first.
Are we talking about moving the USB inward where infrastructure's already at? We're gonna move it in, and infrastructure's already here? Or we're just gonna clamp down and not allow infrastructure to...
No, I think it would actually, it would come back in. And I don't have the map available.
I didn't bring the map.
It would come back in. Actually, the USB, for the most part, is on the west side of Clover already. Is that correct? What we would do is, I think the effect would be, and Audra can correct me if I'm wrong, is actually limit the ability to expand any infrastructure on that, water and sewer lines on that side. So you've got existing infrastructure that serves, but expansion would be affected by the USB. Audra, am I picking that up right?
Steve, that's, I want to keep in mind in that district, that's Utilities Inc., Water District. That's up to Bethel School Road, I believe, and then beyond that.
Right.
Is Clover Water. So something to keep in mind on that is, if we do withdraw, you can, they do have facilities in the ground in some places. Take some time and look at that and see where the most appropriate places to move it in.
Steve, just for clarification, I'm sorry to be drowning. But are you, I saw it to mean, bring it in to say, we don't want expansion in this area. Are you saying that's not the case, and that it's already kinda there? Help me out.
Well, no. Where we had the line before, utilities generally respected that. They didn't, you know, they didn't penetrate that area. I think we can relook at where we had it before, where we have existing utilities, where we can see the expectation for expansion would be.
So let me, without jumping ahead of Robert, just while you're standing there, I know we beat this around, in fact, Ms. Love was on the committee. God, it seemed like two years fighting this monster.
It seemed like about 10 years.
And why was this not, 'cause it was not like, it was not known about all the growth and everything. Why is this now coming out of the blue after two years of this horse being ridden to death?
I can't answer that, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you that, you know, those two districts, those two utility districts haven't changed. We haven't seen a lot of growth in those areas. We've controlled a lot of the growth in that area by rezoning. Most of that area up there is zoned, RUD and AGC, which is low density. And typically, they don't rise to the density of where you're gonna have utilities. I think Utilities Inc. basically provides services as needed. They're not aggressively expanding their service area. Clover provides utilities to the school. They've extended it all the way out there, but they're not aggressively expanding their territory out there either. It provides, by moving the line in, it does provide some protection in the future, future councils, future conditions where we don't grow at a pace that might not be wise.
I'm gonna let Robert go first.
Okay. Couple of things. One, Alice and I've talked about this some, and, you know, we do have different ones. And we all discussed all of this when we were doing the comp plan. Christie fought for hers, for where it, to shrink it back from what was recommended and stuff. We all had the opportunity to do that when we did the comp plan. Honestly, I'm sorry, but I'm not sure that this rises to the level, in my opinion, to bump it ahead of everything y'all have got going on again, to redo a comp plan, which is what this would mean. And I'm a little confused, because if I understand it right, if we say, okay, we compress the USB line, then that means we want more growth inside that USB line, is what I'm hearing, before we allow it to expand out. And that's what everybody in Lake Wiley is hollering about right now, because we've got so much growth going on in Lake Wiley. They don't want it there. They want it further out. So I'm a little confused. It seems to me like we're saying one thing and doing something else. So I'm a little confused on that part. So...
Mr. Roddy again.
My question is, is the growth bearing down on the USB now, the way we want to move it back in? Is that area growing like that, that we need to commit staff time to, you know, move this thing back? Because it's gonna require staff time. And obviously, we see staff's got a tremendous amount already going on.
Yeah. Audra and I were just having sidebar. Honestly, the fact of the matter is, as much as anything, to your question, Chairman, why wasn't this considered 18, 24 months ago, or even farther back, when this original discussion started? Well, the fact of the matter is, is it was considered. However, the growth pressures out there are real and are intense. This is an opportunity to signal the development community, hey, we're gonna take a breather, and we're gonna bring this back in. So moving the USB would require formal action to expand it. To your point, Mr. Winkler, yeah, I mean, it would, to the extent, promote infill, that may or may not be a positive thing, depending on what the folks in the Lake Wiley community want. So from our perspective, it's a tool, the logic behind doing it is something that's really a policy decision that needs to be debated. The function of this is, however, that if we go down this road, if y'all direct us to go down this road, we will go down that road. I only wanted to point out the fact that it would require a comp plan revision. I know that that's gonna take, you know, however long it'll take just to even develop that, go through the planning commission, and then move forward on that. That on the heels of everything else that Audra just pointed out to y'all that she's working on, is something that I need you to prioritize for.
Well, we're redoing what was done up until a year ago. I mean, we're reinventing the will. And then if we do it for this, and per Robert's point, you're essentially fixing one thing, creating a problem that they are upset about, and making that worse. So I just don't get the logic of, and then with Christie's concerns, and then, well, we did it there, now then we're back to starting all over again. To me, it's not a road to go down.
Isn't this document, I mean, what we're saying is, if we're not willing to ever look at it and amend it, that this is just a piece of paper that we write every 10 years, and that we hope that it's still good five or six years later. And I think that's, the whole point of this is to go back in from time to time and investigate it. Doesn't mean I would support moving the USB line, but if we're afraid to even look at the possibility that this is, this document might not be right. And that, and I'm somewhat curious, though, let me ask this. You said that by pulling it back, it could create that infill. Growth in areas that are unprepared is called sprawl. So having it too far out encourages sprawl, which we can all agree we don't like or want. You pull it in, okay, now all of a sudden, you're gonna get higher density, and you have to be willing to handle the higher density. We still don't have this, the CIP, as if you have, how are we gonna get that worked in here? Would, is a natural step of the CIP then being able to decide where the USB lines should be? Because until you know, my, this is my number one problem with the kinda way we often do growth, is we just say, well, go there. Well, there's no infrastructure there for what goes there. And yes, you don't want to, you know, oh, what's it matter if a couple of hundred homes end up on, out farther closer to Clover? Well, ask the people who are driving on 49 every day, who have to now compete with the 200 to 300 extra cars that are being added to roads that are F. So to me, this is also intertwined, that it's hard often for me to just say, oh, we're gonna do one thing, 'cause every little piece of this puzzle makes sense. I guess I'm trying to get an answer from Andy, you, or Audra, or Steve, or somebody, just say, this makes sense if we are trying to make sure that there is infrastructure in place, so that we can do it. Because that's my understanding what the USB is. We have said, if, up until this line, we will commit infrastructure. There will be infrastructure for you. Well, if there's not, and we know there's not, don't we have some duty to pull it back even just temporarily until there is, and then move it back?
Sure, sure. And I'm not, yeah, and I think all of that makes sense. And, Ms. Love, to your point, what's management's recommendation for what growth management is, I would say that y'all said it, because you set policy. However, from a pure planning standpoint, infill is not bad in an area that's already growing. But it also will take y'all's willingness to zone for higher density. And I know, and I've been, you know, in the one area where I know that higher density would probably be, go over like a lead balloon, it probably would be the most beneficial, because then you'll have the ability to upgrade sewer line, and the infrastructure will be there to do that. So to Mr. Johnson's initial point, yeah, I think this is a living, breathing document. This is something that really does need to be addressed, because things change throughout the years.
I mean, just the name of it itself is 2035 Plan. We are a long way from 2035. If this is gonna be the plan, the current plan is gonna be the plan that I live by, it needs to be renamed to the 2020 Plan. Because it's, we're not looking, we don't have, this plan, it's, we're, it's gonna take us a very short period of time for a plan that's 2035. This plan won't apply in a few years to my district. And I want to say this. And I'm trying to be careful in how I say it, but every council member had an opportunity to meet with the county manager and the planning staff to reevaluate the comp plan for their district. I was the last one to do that. And in that meeting, I asked you and Audra, what can I do in my district? And your suggestion was to pull back the USB. So for you to sit here tonight and make it sound like it's an iffy type thing, and it's gonna be a real pain in the ass to do it, I don't, I don't appreciate, let me finish. I don't appreciate that, because everybody else up here, they weren't in that meeting with us. They didn't hear you say, well, you could do this, and this would be great, and this would be a great tool for growth management. And tonight, in front of everybody, it's not the same message. You're not delivering the same message to the rest of my fellow council members, who I need to support me in what I need to do for Lake Wiley and Clover. Remember, I had a workshop with the Town of Clover and all of council and the mayor last week to discuss all of this, to be sure that we were all on the same page in what we wanted for District Two overall. Our USB is huge. And I'm meeting with developers, I don't know if the rest of you are meeting with developers every week like I am, but I'm meeting with multiple developers who are wanting to come in and rezone something, and build, 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 develop, develop, and development. And I've been elected to this seat by people who say, hold up. We don't want all of this. So for me to meet with you, I'm wasting my time to meet with you. If I'm gonna meet with you and discuss what we want to do, I could've been working on something else, besides planning all of this, knowing that I'm gonna come in here and not get the support that I have.
We're not saying it won't work. There's two questions here. There's the function of the USB line as a growth management tool. And then there's the prioritization of this from a staff perspective, that we're asking council to prioritize for us.
But we're not even at the prioritization yet.
We gotta be, because this is a process...
No, no, we're not. Because all I need to hear you say is, you know what? I do think it's a good idea for her to pull back her USB. And then let us decide where it needs to fall into the priority.
Fair enough.
I mean, if it's six months out, that's great. If it's something that they support me in and say, you know what, you know, that's why I say, my definition of growth management is different from the county's definition of growth management. And I want, I meet with y'all individually, because I want to be sure that we're on the same page before I present something to everybody else. And here we are tonight, and we don't sound like we are in the same, that we're delivering the same package. And that's very, that's very just...
You, too.
...disheartening for me. It's very disheartening.
I saw Bump's hand. So Mr. Roddy.
I want to go back and address a comment that Councilman Johnson mentioned about, you know, it's just a living, breathing document. You know, we're not even two years removed from this thing being final. And now people coming up saying they want to do this, they want to do that. And my direct question to staff is, should this be a priority, to move to the top of the list, considering all the things that we got going on? Because if it's not, we're just spinning our wheels in the mud. And it's, you know, I want to hear from staff. Is this something that we want to put in the mix of all of what we got going on?
You adopted a priority list in the fall.
Okay.
What was presented tonight is where we are in the process of achieving those goals. So to answer your question, we're operating off of that priority list. Y'all need to tell us now that you want us to move something up onto the priority list, and we'll certainly address it. But where we are now, we got enough to keep y'all busy and keep us busy for the months and weeks to come.
All I, and I'm not trying to interrupt you, Robert, but almost every other meeting, almost every meeting, I hear about, why are we on this? Where are we on this? It's like we never get anywhere. We're always throwing something up new.
Did I say that out loud?
It's just like, you know, sooner or later, we gotta get control here, people. And I'm sorry, Mr. Winkler.
I was just gonna say, I told Ms. Love, you know, her USB is her USB. I support her in that. What I'm saying tonight is, I don't want to hear from staff where this falls in our priority, because we've told y'all the priority. And I'm telling you that, right now, that does not, in my opinion, fall in the area of going into bumping something else that we've given you a priority off the list. Now, I agree, it needs to be done. We can look at it. It is a living document. We can adjust it. But that, in my opinion, and maybe it's 'cause it doesn't affect my district, I'm sure in her district, it does. And that's why we need to know, does it, to at least four of us, does it move up to the top 10 in that list? If it doesn't, then we move on. If it does, then we tell you where it goes, and y'all move on. That's our job to tell y'all that. It's not y'all's job to tell us that.
Okay, we gotta wrap this up. We're drowning. Mr. Johnson.
Is there a way, when do we think the CIP will be done?
The CIP for utilities in general?
Well, I thought we were doing a roads...
I'm talking about the thoroughfare.
I apologize, thoroughfare plan.
Yeah.
When are we gonna be done with thoroughfare plan? 100%.
The goal was to have a presentation before council, before we rolled out, at a workshop before we rolled out the actual document. If we push this off to May, which I understand your scheduling conflicts and your limitations, but it would be sometime shortly after that.
We would pass, theoretically pass, a thoroughfare plan by July, end of July.
Well, I hope it isn't that late, but if possible.
All right. Then that's fine. You're now giving me a timeline. Is it, is there any sense to us adopting a thoroughfare plan, looking at this whole utility idea, and then making decisions, and coming in? Because I think there's some consensus here that, yes, moving the USB line's not a bad thing. I just think the idea of moving it from 12 to two isn't going to happen here. So I'm trying to figure out, if you, if there's any consensus to saying, hey, let's revisit this, is there a point where we've passed, we've studied enough things, we're getting a grasp on what an infrastructure standpoint looks like, that it's time now to revisit where this might rank for council? Because if not, then the question becomes, if I have something that I want put on that list, at what point do I get to actually have us rank it?
Something has to come off the list, or else we have to stop them in the middle of something.
Well, you could just go to the end of the list. You could, I mean, you don't have to, nothing has to come off the list.
I'm just trying to get on the list.
You can just get slotted at the back of the list. Go ahead, Jack. I'll yield to Jack.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
And I guess I'd just like to add, this is, our staff time is limited, resources are limited, our resource is limited. That's why it's so important to get this done. If I remember correctly, and the USB is more of a statement that says, we're not gonna go any further than this. It doesn't necessarily say we're going to this line, but it says we're not, it's a commitment not to go any further. So the USB was, is where it made sense for us to put priorities, or where they were already there. If I remember correctly during the discussion of District Two, it was just moved to the state line, 'cause it seemed like it made a whole lot of sense. And that kinda saved a lot of time from going, doing a comprehensive plan over, and doing some, kind of trying to predict the future. Now we're talking about moving it back to where we probably should've left it before. Definitely wouldn't want to contract it in where we go, where we, utilities come in. One of the, I guess, if we were in control of utilities, the USB, you know, we would... The, one of the, I guess, if we were in control of utilities, the USB, you know, we would, we would just do them. The fact matters, we're not in complete control of utilities. But USB at one time was thought as immovable, but it's clearly not immovable, but it is intentionally hard to move. But that's why it's important to do it right when, if we do it. If we were to open it up, we'd open up the whole thing.
Well, let's do this. We got one in, and do you really want to say something?
I think it maybe would hopefully make Miss Love happy and end your discussion. One, I do want to say this to Miss Love. What she said is true. I want to tell her that on the record, that I did say one of the growth management tools is to use the USB and you can move it because if what it was supposed to achieve is not working for her district, then it is appropriate to look at it and look at where you really want your growth. Also, in the comp plan, one of the things that we are supposed to do as staff, and this is on the planning staff, and I just spoke to Steve, it's not going to be mine, it's going to be his, so he's the one who's going to do this, is to look at the USB every year. It's time to look at it. And he did say to me, Councilwoman Love, and for council, those projects are my projects. I will work on those. He said after the thoroughfare in July, he will be able to move on the USB.
I want to say one thing. Thank you, Audra. So, I'm not impatient, but I am trying to get ahead of, like I said, I want to plan for it. So, a year ago, Michael Johnson and I met with Audra and a bunch of people, a group of people, to talk about the stormwater ordinance. And I was told at that time, this could take nine months to a year. And I said, okay. But you know what? It got on the list. So, when I say to you that I don't want to stop it, I don't want to control it, I want to management, manage it by being ahead of it, this is me trying to get ahead of it. So, if you tell me it's going to take six months for us to even look at this, that's fine, but I'm going to hold you to that in six months, hey, we're going to look at it. And it's very important to my district. I'm not asking you to take anything off of the list. Most of the stuff on the list, I ask for. The top three things, I ask for. I'm not asking you to take anything off the list. I'm not asking you to move anything around or to delay anything that you're currently working on. I'm in full support of everything that we've looked at as priorities. But what I'm asking is for this to be considered next, soon after this stuff. Because if you want to see my calendar and who all I'm meeting with and the areas that they're looking at, I'm happy to show it to you, and you'll be shocked, you know? I have a lot of those meetings, I hold those meetings in Michael Johnson's conference room so that he's aware. He's lived this, he sees it, and he knows where I'm coming from. So, we meet with a lot of these people together. But it's, it is worse, it's worse than you might think in my district.
All right, I'm going to let Ms. Cox speak, and then we're wrapping this up.
I think growth management is a tool, from the strategic planning session, that was the number one goal from the entire council. And what I want to make sure that we do is if we revisit this, that we look at, that we look at the issues we met with, with staff about some zoning designations that were a problem. We said we were going to tweak this. That needs to be included in it. That's what we talked about at the committee meetings. Those are the things that have been requested by other council members. If there's going to be a tweak, let's tweak it. And I certainly have no opposition to us looking at this again, and I think that we need to do that in order to look at everyone's district.
Okay, so now I'm hearing, let's open up the whole can of worms. So, I've heard three.
I don't know that you heard that.
Nobody said that. Can we take a five-minute break?
They're agreeing that the larger said Steve's got a plan, and the plan, that's all we wanted to hear was the plan.
Well, can I make another comment since everybody else?
Sure, go ahead.
It's real simple. Just don't rezone. I mean, because a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the things that, that people are going to try to want to do is going to require rezoning. And if, if the infrastructure's not there, the simplest thing, and I wrote it down, and I about showed it to several people, just don't rezone. That's a tool that we have on this council that I think at times get lost. We don't have to say yes to a rezoning to allow development to happen. You know, and it can't be considered spot zoning because we own that right to say yea or nay on a rezoning. So, the simplest thing, for the meantime, if you don't want development in your area, just say no, don't rezone it. And it won't require any more staff time.
Well, let's, let's do this. I heard two people for sure want to go back and revisit it, and then I heard the staff comments when I begged not to say anything. But anyway, so, do we want this to take priority over all the stuff we've been trying to deal with, or do we want staff just to go back and just add their modification recommendation?
Did you hear? I said, we do not want this to take priority over the stuff that's already being worked on.
Well, the point being, though, we always, we always have items like that that keep popping up, and then everything else gets drowneded out. So, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, and that's why I thought when, when Ms. Miller pointed out that the process plan, that Mr. Allen wants to look at it after the thoroughfare plan, that that satisfied Miss Love's objection, Miss Love's comments, say, just tell me when. And I do, Kristy likes when people point out that she's right, and I do think that she made a very important point, that growth management, growth management is the number one priority, and if it relates to growth management, it needs to be considered. It doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, then, you know, tell us, tell us when we want to talk about it, because we are doing stuff that's not related to growth management.
I support it a hundred percent. If it goes in after thoroughfare, we're through with that plan, and that's the next thing he moves on.
And he may look at it and say, it's fine, there's no plans to, but, but look at it then, and then we'll decide.
Let's just go.
Oh, okay. So...
She wants you to tell her she's right, too.
Oh, you're absolutely right, Ms. Cox.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, here again, I agree a hundred percent. Everything we do is a living, I want to say tissue, but I'm kind of falling back into my profession, living documents or whatever the word is, but, and we certainly have a tool of management, which was the comprehensive land use plan, that certainly should be, be able to kind of make it better. But, I mean, we just got the ruler. I mean, we hadn't even laid it down yet to measure. Oh, let's get a different ruler. So, I mean, I'm getting extremely frustrated, so I'll leave it at that. I think you, y'all got the information y'all needed. Next item, discussion regarding the sewer line on Highway two seventy-four. Miss Love wanted that on the agenda.
It's actually, there were three things that I had asked to be on the agenda, and of the three, this was probably the least of the priority. So, I'm going to skip the discussion of this because I've actually reached out to, he's welcome to say whatever he wants to say about it. I mean, you know...
I just came at, I was going to introduce myself. I'm Barry McKinnon, I'm the...
He's new. Welcome to York County.
Utilities guy now, so...
Oh, okay.
So, it's good to meet y'all.
Who's, oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Rick.
Okay.
So, so, rather than, rather than deal with council on this, I just felt like I should just reach out to county staff, and I have. So, they're going to answer some questions for me, and we'll determine at a later time if it needs to be discussed with council.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, I'm just curious to know what it involves. Is it too much? Is it too big? Does it need to be expanded?
Well, I'll tell you what my concern was. My overall concern, based on phone calls that I received from some of the residents, was that we were bringing this, we're putting in a, there's a need for a larger sewer line, so we're bringing this from, basically from Padler's Cove down two seventy-four. And when we get to a particular property, we're crossing over two seventy-four, coming down past a house and a half, and coming back over across two seventy-four. And so, my original concern was why are we skipping that house? I did attend a public meeting that I found out about at last minute, and I attended that meeting, and I listened to all of the residents, and basically have just asked Lisa Haygood to, just to look into why we're doing that so that I can give a definite and reasonable answer to, for the rationale for doing that.
Do you want to do that tonight, or just do it later?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Nice, nice to have you here.
Roll tide.
Okay. Consider third reading case number seventeen thirty-five, rezoned from AGC to RUD at seventeen thirty-seven Highway five fifty-seven in the Clover community.
Motion to approve with some conditions.
Being, what condition?
Conditions? Okay. I got them all right here. So, the conditions for this would be, there's seven. No manufactured modular homes permitted. Minimum lot size, two acres. Subdivision of the subject parcel will be limited at three lots shown on the sketch plan. No additional subdivision of the property will be permitted. Twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer must be provided along the rear property lines. The applicant must remove any and all trailers on the property within one hundred and twenty days of the approval of the rezoning ordinance. Failure to remove the trailers will result in a zoning violation. No agricultural uses are permitted. Homes shall be a minimum of two thousand square feet heated floor space.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Winkler.
I would want to hear from the applicant on that because that's seven things on a third reading all of a sudden. I'd want to know that that's something that they're willing to agree to, that we're not just all of a sudden saying, okay, we're down to third reading, we're going to approve you, but we're only going to approve you with all these things that we're adding on to you at the last minute. So, I would ask for that, or else I wouldn't be able to support.
The applicant, I think the applicant has agreed with everything. The only thing that may be some question, Tim, is the, the twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer. He would prefer a setback instead of a buffer. And in talking to Steve and staff, the county and I feel like the undisturbed buffer is basically the same thing. So, we, and the residents, I've met with all of the, I've met with the applicant, I've met with the prop, not the property owner, the applicant, the real estate agent, and every neighbor. My gut is to not rezone this at all, so I'm doing this as a refa, as a favor to all of those residents and the property owner.
Per Mr. Winkler, Tim, can you come forward? I don't normally allow comments, but this, this is such a big change over what we were kind of drifting down. Does, is this agreeable, everything that was?
What we talked about was a twenty-five-foot nature buffer on that right side of the property and zero setback on the build, you know, used on the back line, there's a ten-foot setback, but have a zero setback line. So, if for some reason somebody wanted to put a, another structure, a barn, a little building, they could go right to that twenty-five-foot buffer.
So, every itemized statement she made?
Well, the ag use in the, I think in the RUD, you can have chickens, you can have bees, you can have...
No bees.
Goats.
I'm not out.
Not for production, but for pets. And all we want is for pets. All they want, like, is for pets. Every kid's had rabbits, we've all had rabbits.
You can have a water park in RUD.
Well, you probably shouldn't, but, yeah. We don't want a water park. So, the conditions were the square footage, the lot split, can't do that, twenty-five-foot nature buffer, two thousand square foot.
Heated floor.
What's that?
The heated floor space, two thousand square foot.
And no commercial ag, because I don't want, I mean, when you have two acres and there's going to be a seven-acre house that's remainder, and there's a large building there, someone's going to have a couple of dogs or some, some pets.
So, that's, yes, you did agree to, I mean, the conditions, I think it's on you.
As long as it's, you can't say no ag use, but just whatever animals are allowed in that zoning code is what we'd agree to. And a twenty-five-foot nature buffer, but zero setback, because I don't know how that gets pleased when someone goes to get a permit. How is that, who pleases that?
Well, I, I need to, I'm kind of getting late in the evening now, so I need for you to simplify. Per Ms. Cox's comment, was that a yes, that you're agreeable to everything that Miss Love mentioned as a contingency, or there's one or two that you're not quite agreeing with?
I'm not agreeing with the, I haven't heard a zero setback yet on that buffer.
He just wants to add that to number, number, number four.
Twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer must be provided along the rear property lines.
With a zero...
With a zero setback, zero.
That's what he wants to add to that one. And then a no agriculture uses, he just wants to make sure that that doesn't eliminate pets.
That's it?
When did agriculture ever eliminate?
Well, with rezoning to a different, to, I think, I don't remember, it's been so long, RUD.
But you have pets.
Pets.
Nobody can have...
When you say no agricultural uses...
Actually have a chicken in the city of Rock Hill, but you cannot have a chicken in the county of York under the, in the single-family ordinance. So, there are some uses that he's...
There was discussions in the past that some neighbors didn't want any livestock. And I just, when you say no ag, that includes, you know, rabbits, chickens, goats.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Roddy.
The difference between a setback and a buffer, don't buffers have to be maintained? So, five years from now, someone comes up and say, hey, that buffer's not there, someone's wanting to go back out and plant something, right?
Well, we talked about a, a nature buffer, and then if you have a nature, if you have that buffer, you can't put a fence up to the property line. You have to put a fence at your new twenty-five-foot line. Well, then, your setback is, is usually determined from your buffer line. So, you're, you're giving it thirty-five feet, one lot.
So...
That's not, if that's not correct, I'm finding...
So, I guess whether you want to word it as a twenty-five-foot setback and a twenty-five-foot natural buffer, which would give you a zero line, you could, you could put your line on the setback line.
And your fence, yes. Your fence or... Twenty-five feet off the line.
But the set, yeah, and the setback is, is, setback is, is so you'll have room to build the fence, you will have to, with a twenty-five-foot, you're going to have to not disturb that at all.
Yes, so fence would come twenty-five feet off of the property, in the, within the property.
We're asking for a twenty-five-foot undisturbed, undisturbed buffer. That's all.
And...
You're saying that setback is off of the property line?
Mr. Chairman, I've been, in five years, I've never gotten to a third reading, and we've taken input from a puddle. Well, I appreciate the initial questions to Mr. Healan.
I've already worked on them.
I think we need to direct our questions to staff so that we have a clear-cut answer, or we need to just vote. I think it's, I, I, I think we move it, I, I mean, the five years I've been here, we've never done what we're...
Oh, in the seven years I've been chair, we've never done it before, but we've never had this many contingencies come up on a third vote.
I don't think it's a problem to do it, but what it, what it, what we may want to do is defer third reading, get the, get the conditions written.
We've done that, the staff wrote this.
Well, yeah, but...
I'm fine, yes, I'm fine.
He approved it all, all the names.
We want to get it over.
Chicago, sit down, thank you.
You're fine with the way, you're fine with the way it's written here.
I'm going to not rezone it in a minute.
So, if there's, if there's no further questions, question on the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Did he say take his two front teeth out? He didn't hit him for it.
Next item, consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and among an entity known for the time being as Project, is that Leah? An entity known for the time being as Project Leah Developer Collectively, the companies in York County, South Carolina, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu in lieu of tax agreement with the companies providing for payment by the companies of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits in connection with such agreement, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. New business, council to consider solicitor's office request for permission to apply for and to accept if awarded a fiscal year 2018-2019 Victim of Crime Act continuation grant in the amount of $158,250 with a 20% match.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we continue to note these types of grants in our budget. I support the grant, but this should be noted that when this money runs out, this becomes, comes out of the general fund.
Right, which staff is real alert to, and that's why they pulled it out of consent agenda. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Recommend number two, recommend council to approve contract amendment with Woolbert Incorporated of Columbia, South Carolina, for additional scope of services regarding RFQ 2474 for revisions to York County Stormwater Ordinance for a total amount of $75,000.
Move to approve.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Roddy.
What's the current contract price we're paying now in addition to the 75? Do we? Are we adding the 75, or is this just a one-time total? Because this is amendment.
Well, on page 15 in your packet, it'll tell you, give you the breakdown.
You good?
Total cost is 75,000.
That's just for the 75?
Is this a change order, is this, or is this the original order, I think is what, that's the question I'm hearing.
Somebody?
Can you answer, I'm sorry. No, the way this works is there was a master service agreement, which is basically a big contract, and as they do new projects, it comes on as a task. So the 75,000 is in a, is a, is basically a new project for us. Did that answer your question?
Anybody else? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, recommend council award a bid number 2506 regarding the purchase of one new fire truck pumper apparatus to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Kovach Mobile Equipment Company of Naskia Hunting, whatever, Pennsylvania, for a total amount of $489,500.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Yes, Ms. Cox.
Is this something that you guys are recommending?
When I originally, when I originally did it, I did recommend that because it is part of the county's fire replacement program, just focusing on the Fort Mill and what they do to provide those services, the equipment office. We do have an ongoing study at this time, and I'm not sure what results of the study are going to say about the program. And so I'm not sure, how long do we have to be, to get information on the study?
We're, we're close. I'm waiting on a date now to start pulling together meetings, council.
I'm sorry, said he couldn't hear. So I'm not sure it wouldn't be advisable just to wait a month.
I think we're looking at your recommendations, so.
Should defer?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Are you saying, yeah.
Yeah, defer.
Defer it? Who made the motion?
Robert?
You did?
I think we both made it about the same time, but whichever one, I'll, I'll be fine with, I'll withdraw the motion.
So who made the second?
I think I did.
You did? So y'all good?
Withdraw the second.
Yeah.
So can I have a new motion then, just defer it?
Move to defer.
Second.
Discussion.
Move to defer for the first, no, what is this? This is the second, the second meeting in April.
Okay, good. One, just one quick question. How old is the pumper in Fort Mill?
Probably 15 years.
Say again?
Probably 15 years.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll find out.
All right, thanks, sir. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, recommend council award a bid number 2508 regarding the construction of the Pennies for Progress roadway widening improvements and bridge replacement of South Carolina 274 and S 177 Pole Branch Road to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Blythe Development Company of Charlotte, for a total amount of $29,937,803.49.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Billy Haggins had two birthdays since he originally talked about this at the beginning of the meetings.
I would say that's probably correct. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item is the, what Mr. Roddy requested, approve a resolution in support of Senate Bill 0431. Mr. Roddy?
I wanted to pull this out to have some discussion. One, just to let the general public know.
Well, yeah. Yeah, did you, per Ms. Cox, did, do you want to just discuss it, or have, go ahead and have a motion, then discuss?
Oh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
As well.
Second.
All right, discussion.
The reason why I wanted to have it pulled out for discussion is, one, to let the, the general public know what we're doing, what we're working on, and two, was to say, I wish it did a little more, I wish it included a little more, because we're speaking on behalf of our schools, we're speaking on behalf of our colleges and universities and public facilities, in the, in the event, or in lieu of some national tragedies that's been going on across the country. The one thing I think this falls short of is making mention of putting in, asking our state senators to put in some guides or guidelines to restrict some gun purchases. I, I sit back and I watch some of these national tragedies happen, and everybody wants to see more gun control, more, more this, more that, whether it's background checks or increasing the age. And me personally, and this is my personal, I wanted to get my personal part on the record. I would support, I would like to see our state senators and our governor support increasing the age to 21 to purchase a firearm. I would like to see our state senators and our governor increase the background checks, because saying increasing the penalty part does nothing for the protection for our students and our teachers and our faculty and staff that work at these facilities. So I wanted to get that on the record as well. I have no problem with supporting what they're already working on, but I wish it would include some discussion, some measures that take into account the prevention part, because this only addresses the penalty part, the criminal part, the punishment part. But we do, we're not, this says nothing about the prevention when it comes to restricting gun purchases or increasing the background checks, and, or even for that matter, we've heard the mental health issues that come into play when it, when we're talking about some of these school shootings. So this, I do support it, but I wanted to go on the record to say, I wish our state senators and governors would take a look at some preventive measures to keep these firearms out of the hands of some people, whether it's a mental health issue, you know, 19-year-olds able to purchase these firearms, who, some 19-year-olds are still in high school, 18-year-olds are definitely primarily still in high school. And they're able to go out and purchase some of these firearms that we're seeing utilized in some of these shootings. But I, I did want to go on the record to say, I do support this, this bill, I do support York County Senate, but I wish it went a step farther. That's what I, and that's the main reason why I wanted to have it pulled out.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Winkler?
Just quickly, I'll say, I think Second Amendment is not a council, county council discussion, so I'm not going to go there with that. But my, originally, you know, my question with this was, when I read it, I thought it was already unlawful for a person to threaten or solicit to threaten or cause damage to school property and stuff. So it looked to me like it was a bill that didn't say a whole lot or do a whole lot, because it looked like it was making things unlawful that were already unlawful. But I understand our sheriff supports it, and so I support it because our sheriff supports it.
Kevin, you want to?
If I may, and I'll be quick, I promise.
Yes.
So there are.
But I changed the process.
So there are two laws on the books that we, without, without digging deep into the weeds and, and talking about our tactics and those kinds of things. There are two laws on the books currently, if, say, a student makes a threat. One is 1617420, communicating threats by electronic means. And so the, the old line of thinking of that was threaten somebody over the phone. That's really when that law was passed. And so that carries a whopping 30 days in jail, or a $500 fine. The other law that we're able to utilize when, when threats are made is 1617430, which is disturbing schools, which years ago, the penalties for that were much more than what they are now. The penalty for that is now 90 days. And so this, while it may not be perfect, is a step in the right direction for us to use a tool to act as a deterrent, and also when, when you can sentence for more than a year, a judge can also require probation, which is more supervision and those follow-ups. The judge can pretty much rule what he wants. So this does give us a little more teeth. We do have laws on the books, but I think the messages of the laws that we have aren't adequate, and I certainly would support anything like that. And it's the council's decision rather not to, to support the, the act. The sheriff does support it.
And, and that explains it more. Just when I first read it, I thought, well, it's already illegal now, I understand, and again, you support it.
It's just not very much illegal.
Ms. Cox?
This basically just, just gives law enforcement the ability to take stronger direction against anyone who threatens any of our schools. It doesn't have any effect on the Second Amendment, which I'm a full support of. So I think I just want to make sure that that's clear. This, this basically gives you a tool that you don't have to make sure that our schools are safe.
Correct, and it also, not only does it schools, but it's publicly-owned buildings.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Just so we all, this is also, has a companion bill in the House, House Bill 5007, which is sponsored by Representative Greg Delaney, who's in our local delegation. So I certainly will support this resolution, but I, I'm not sure if it should be amended to also say, hey, we, don't do any good if it only gets out of one chamber, it's got to get out of both, so.
Yeah, it is out of subcommittee, I think, last week in the Senate.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, committee reports. Planning and Economic Development, Honorable Chairman Robert Winkler.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Economic Development met on Wednesday, March 14, 1:30 in the afternoon. Councilmember Williams and Johnson were there, and myself. We had a discussion again on fee in lieu of tax agreements and update on the process, and we requested that management bring something before council that is a process for us to make sure we stay on top of fee in lieu of agreements and know year-to-year whether we're on track or off track and what that is, to bring, you know, not just a letter to follow up with what we discovered a meeting or two ago, but to make sure that doesn't happen again, put a process in place. We discussed economic development, C funds and some projects that are out there that, that, you know, is looking like they may be coming before us for requests for some C funds and different things for some economic development. We discussed the ED budget and program, which they told us would be coming before us like everybody else's budget. Before long, we didn't get any, any insight or a sneak peek on any of it. We just kind of, and Chad's looking there, I might have misspoke on something. So Chad, if my memory's wrong, please correct me on that, but.
Just remembering.
And then we had a discussion on the Economic Development Organization, which we have had, I think, for the three years I've been on council, as to whether or not the Economic Development Board, as it is structured right now, is the most efficient, most effective way, or if we should look at other ways of doing it. And I'm always open to looking at other ways of doing it. And I think that's pretty much what the committee said, was bring us something and show us why it's better and how it's better, and we'll get it before council if, if you make us believe that, so.
Thank you, sir. Next committee report, Public Works Committee, Honorable William Buprotty.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We met on Wednesday, also, March 14, at 6:00 PM. The full committee was present, myself, Christie, and Allison. We got an update from Public Works, Eric. We were introduced to the new animal control director. We got some good information on the adoption rates, some new things that the staff is working on to reduce owner surrenders, programs that they're working on to increase in adoptions as well. It's, it's continuously a revolving door on things that staff is doing to make improvements. We're actually, about six months ago, I think it was around September, we, we met and we were talking about moving York County to a no-kill county. We're trying to get ourselves prepared and get staff prepared, and they're looking at the financial cost that would mean to the county, as well as the staffing cost it would, would bring to the county. So staff is looking at several different options of things that we can do to improve animal control. But I think, since we've got a new animal control director, I think we just brought on a new vet, so we're, we're going to start getting some more traction, making our headway towards better times of animal control. I know a lot of times we, we hear from people sharing their concerns, but now that we're basically about back to full staff, we look for some better days at, over at our animal control.
Mr. Roddy, for a public that's watched, watching right now, would you clarify the no-kill? I mean, that's what, less than 10%? Is that the deal?
I think it's 95.
Oh, less than 5%?
90? 90%, okay.
Okay, less than 10%.
And that means, you know, more, more pets being adopted out, less pets euthanized. And I do want to stress, and, and this is something that's going to come back before the full council, that a no-kill shelter, I mean, a no, York County becoming, working towards becoming no-kill, doesn't mean that animals won't get euthanized. It just sets, in my opinion, as of right now, sets that goal that we'll have to work towards, getting 90% or more of our animals adopted out or rescued to, and the goal is always is to reduce the pets that we euthanize and put down. We want to try to continue to find those pets good homes and, and things like that.
The next is Finance and Operations, the Honorable Michael Johnson.
Finance and Operations met today at 5:45. We considered applications for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We approved Barbara Candler for District 2. We deferred as to other openings to request a clarification on ethics compliance. On the Catawba Mental Health Board, we denied the application.
Is it? Quick. Did I not have anyone up for approval?
Did, that was the other thing.
Okay, okay.
Okay, next item is Councilmember New Non-Agenda Comments. If you just want to have a comment or something to talk about later, not debate. Anybody have any?
I do.
Oh, Ms. Cox?
I don't usually do this, but a couple of weeks ago, the county manager met with the boards and, and commission members, and I attended, and, and I know the council was not technically part of that agenda, but there were several other council members there. And Mr. Shanahan did a good job explaining that, and I think the purpose of it was to, to give some feedback to the boards and commissions about what we met about, our strategic plan, the things that council had done. But one thing that one of the folks brought up is, can we have meetings that are closer to where these folks were? I was shocked at how many people actually showed up. That was really, there were a lot of folks that were there, and to me, I think it would have been better. And I know that the city of Rock Hill and other municipalities actually have interaction with the board members. I think it would be better if we were there. If we made it a point to be a joint meeting, that we sat, made a point to say, we're going to listen to you, and we're going to share with you what we came out of our strategic meeting. And I would urge council for us to think about doing that, certainly at the next meeting, if we're not going to do something before then, because we have, we do have a lot of stuff going on. But I think it's critical that we recognize our board and commission members, and that we, that we give them, you know, the benefit of listening to them, and, and that we do, then the honor of talking to them, is they do so much to serve us, and they don't get recognized. And they come up here and get under oath, and then we don't see them again until, you know, they get reappointed. I think that's a mistake. I think we're missing a huge opportunity.
When did we stop that yearly picnic with the boards and commissions, or?
Since I've been here, you have never done this since I've been here, sir.
Okay, so it's been over five years, I guess.
Yeah, the last one was at Knight Stadium, if that helps.
Right, yeah, I thought I remembered.
But we do this annually, sir.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Love?
I do have one comment. So the item that was not put on the agenda, that I had asked to be on the agenda, just want to let council know, I'm going to change it, I'm going to make it a comment, in the freedom of speech area here at council. One of the things that is a concern to the constituents in District 2 and myself is Highway 557 and the Pennies for Progress project that is currently being done. I think, I know staff's about 70% done with the road and how it's supposed to look. There's a home there that is possibly, could be historical, and we've rerouted 557 way out of the way to avoid that, that home and that yard. In talking to, I've talked, I've met with staff, I've met with management, I've met with the homeowners and the neighbors. And what I have at this point asked for from Bill Shanahan is the cost, the additional cost to move that road from where it could be, if that house were not historical, to where it is being moved. I've spoken with people at the state, several people with South Carolina DOT, and my goal is to present to you a home that is not historical in the next few weeks. And I'd like to know what the savings would be to move that road back out of the yard of the man who originally called me. So my, my goal at this point is to find out what the, what the cost is of routing away from, away from that, away from that home on 557.
Which would save us a lot of money, but I did ask, Mike, you weren't here, I did ask Amy to look in, if it's a historical designation, is there anything a governing body can do, or as long as that's the case, there's no option?
Yeah, from, there was a cultural and resources report done back in 2012, which analyzed this property and six or eight other properties along the project, and this was the only one that came back eligible for the historic registry. Doesn't mean it is historic, it means it's eligible for the historic registry. And based on the guidelines by national, or the federal requirements is, you can't touch that property.
Well, that's what's my.
Right, so that was why we were forced to shift south, to the opposite side of the road. That was back in 2012, where we are in the middle of right-of-way acquisition now, and the right-of-way agent approached the property owner who's going to be impacted the most by this alignment, and then he kind of threw up a red flag of, why is it coming so far over here? We met with Councilwoman Love, the property owner. We reached back out to the state Historic Preservation Office in Columbia. They reevaluated it, because part of the property has been sold and being developed now, and they told us, yes, it's still considered eligible, and that's.
Well, just keep us informed.
Right.
If the door opens.
I will say this would be probably a two- to three-year delay in the timeline of the other project.
Really?
Because we're, you're talking 25% of the project would have to be redesigned. So redo survey, redo your geotech, redo your hydro design, I mean, redo the designs of the DOT. So it's going to be a, a time delay as well as a cost delay, additional cost as well.
So, so what I ask for is the cost difference. I want to know how much the savings would be to the taxpayers to not put it where it is, because across the street from that is wetlands, we're putting in two bridges. I want to know what the difference is going to be. I want to know what the difference is going to be to, to move it or to not move it. Because I've also talked to, to Shippo or whoever that, that group is called, and they gave me that as an alternative. They said that is, that is what we could use to possibly not detour away from, from that house. And I'm still working with them on some other things, but the first question is, what is, what is the cost? That's, that is the question that I would like to have answered.
Well, let's end this and y'all just kind of communicate and let us know if there's ever an opening, opening there that, but it sounds like it's, what?
We will put a cost together and provide that.
Okay.
To the full council.
Uh, I, I just want to add one point, I had an issue at my office where we had to call nine one, nine one one. And I stayed out of the way, I just observed a little bit and I was kind of questioning how things are done. So I'm going to sit down when I can with the person over that, but I thought, well, if there's other council members that may want to hear it, I'm just bringing that forth, if there's anybody else, then we'll try to work it with your schedule too. If not, fine, I'll just do it when I can, but just throwing that out there.
And here, here what?
Take the hand on what it is.
The process and who they, first responders, what's the criteria when they call?
Learn, learn how a man one-on-one work.
Yeah, just, I had some, after seeing the system work, I just had some questions. So anybody that wants to sit there with me, let me know and we'll work it out together, otherwise I'll just move forward. Okay, no citizen concerns and do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir, I move we go into executive session and receive legal advice regarding an update on Carolina Water Service rate case before the public search for the commission.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, we'll be back in five minutes to wrap things up. If we have no further discussion, do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.